July 20th, meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And so I'd like to invite our guests to join the council on staff in the pledge. Tonight, I think we're being joined by Troop 43. Is Troop 43 here? Boy Scout troop? Well, we can't wait for them. So how about Denise Seals? Denise Seals, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of significant exposure to litigation and to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the stationary engineers, Local 39. All right, that brings us to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, this item provides an opportunity for public forum, but we are prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on any item that's brought up under Item 1A. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and to turn that into the city clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart that indicates which item the council is currently considering. We know that for some folks, speaking in public can cause anxiety and hives and other allergic reactions, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or actually even any applause or other demonstrations and that we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. We take the yellow card, the speaking requests, all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's complete and the council questions or the public comment have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. So if you're here on a specific agenda item, please be sure to get your yellow card in as soon as possible, but as I said, no later than the conclusion of the staff report. So with that, we have one request under Item 1A, and that's by Edward Castreina. Help is on the way. Here comes the clerk.
There we go. Thank you. Just questions for Bill and the city council, really, and it pertains to the $2.5 million that was set aside by Group E. I was at the meetings with my wife and Hap and a lot of other people. They told us a lot of nice things, a lot of great things were going to happen on our side of town, like a water park. It ended up on the other side of town. But I really wanted to know, Bill, because I've asked you, and it's been five or six weeks now, for an accounting of that money and where it was spent. Since it affected the area in Broderick and we were told the money was going to be spent on these projects there, where was the money spent? I mean, it would have been great if some of the money was set aside for Bright Park, but even if it wasn't, I would like to know and a lot of citizens would like to know where that money was spent. Was it, any of it spent on the north side?
Well, I am, I did ask.
You want to wait for it? For it to complete, because this is, it's not, it's not C-SPAN, it's not Prime Minister's Questions time, so if you want to put your questions on the record and then if Mr. Kristoff or the city manager want to address them, happy to do it.
I'd like to have them on the record, sure. So I would like an accounting.
Well, after you and I talked, I did, when we had a council meeting either that night or very shortly after, I asked staff to bring forth that accounting. I haven't seen that yet either, but I have talked to the city manager about it, and I think he has talked to Cindy Tuttle, our recreation director and Parks and Rec director. And so I just don't know where the paper is, but at the same time, I just wanted to let you know that I did follow through and asked to have that done.
Okay, I thought I would have had something on paper by six weeks, you know?
Yeah, I know. I thought so too, but so far it hasn't.
Okay. Well, we have someone looking into it too, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that's our only request on Item 1A. I would just like to add, because with this issue, you know, it comes up repeatedly, the settlement with Group E was for long, it was for investments in the community, and most of those funds have not been spent. They are in reserve for us to be able to leverage other opportunities. For example, when we wanted, when the Kaboom Park, the Disney Park became a possibility, it was the existence of those funds, which we ended up not having to draw down much of, it was, that made it possible because we could make that match. When we applied to the state several times for funding for various elements of Bright Park, we needed the, we needed those funds to be in the bank in order to qualify for the, for the local match. There's nowhere near enough funds in that pot to do the Bright Park improvements. So either we spend all the money and get very little improvement in the park, or we use the money to leverage the funds from other sources, principally state and federal grants. That's been the strategy that we've discussed here many, many, many times and in the community as well. It's been our strategy for every, virtually every successful project in the whole city. We're not a rich city, and so when we have, when we have any money in the bank, it's almost always for the purpose of leveraging other people's money in order to make something wonderful happen. So we, those monies remain available for us to be able to make exactly those kind of investments and to bring Bright Park and other community amenities and the Brighton-Broderick area to life. So I also want to say, just on the Spray Park, because I know it can be, because of the intricacies and the complexities of municipal finance, that sometimes the folks look at a park or a street in Southport and compare it to a park or to a street that's in the state streets neighborhood, and then look at the waterfront and then look at Bright or Broderick, and they all have different funding. And so the Spray Park, there was no money for a Spray Park in the city. The funds for that Spray Park were created because of the development projects in the Southport area. The only way to generate that kind of money in Bright or Broderick would be to bulldoze the neighborhood and build a whole new development, which of course, no one in the neighborhood and certainly no one in the council wants to see happen. And so we're, so to make improvements in existing neighborhoods, like the neighborhood that I lived in for 25 years here in the community, we have to get grants, we have to get lucky, we have to find other money. We don't have development impact fees because we don't have new development in those neighborhoods. And so it is a, it's a, it's tempting, it's a false choice to compare something that gets built in, in Southport or even on the waterfront to the existing neighborhoods in Westmore Oaks or Westfield or Bright or Broderick because the financing opportunities are much more limited in older parts of the city, which is why things like Measure G, Measure J, Measure K, Measure U, Measure V, and now Measure E have been put in place so that the whole city contributes to improvements in the older parts of the community and the industrial parts of the community as well.
And I think one of the things that would go a long way to raising the comfort level for the, especially the people in Broderick here, that we do give that accounting. How much is it? Where is it? Is it in Fund 106? Is it in Fund 18? Whatever it is, and it's like the mayor says, sometimes it doesn't make sense just to go ahead and spend that money. Sometimes it makes a lot of sense if you can put that money into a fund and then use it as leverage to get more money that can go into a development, into whatever it may be. It may be an additional ball field, it may be an additional, whatever it is, bathroom. But it makes some sense to do those kinds of things, but I also think it's important to report back to you so that your comfort level is raised, that you know that, number one, that money wasn't squandered away someplace, and number two, that one of these days, you're going to be able to use some of those funds to get some of the things that you're asking for. And so, because in the very near future, we're also going to go out and we are going to ask for a sales tax override because there are a number of things that we need to do in all parts of our community, and it is very, very important that people like you understand where those monies come from, where those monies are going, and you at least have some kind of a budget or whatever you want to call it to say, okay, the council is spending money wisely and we are going to support a sales tax override. And so I think it's important that we do that for you.
All right, thank you. So that's all on Item 1A, so we'll proceed to Item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johannesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of YOLO's on Air Quality Management District met on July 12th. We heard the 2015, 2016, the review of the particle, 2.5 particle composition in the atmosphere, and that's, those are the things, the particles that are about a thirtieth the size of a, thirtieth the width of a human hair that cause things like heart disease and other health problems. And as I've reported in the past, the Air Quality Management District, 80% of the things that are in the air right now are things that we can't control through mobile sources, but the 20% are things that we can control, including diesel fuels, manufacturing, and things of that nature. So the good news is because of the wet weather last year, this region had zero days of exceedance on that particular pollutant. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on June 16th, and the only action item there was to approve the budget on the Washington project we have. We also continued discussion on a potential project for permanent supportive housing for homeless disabled veterans. And finally, on June 29th, YOLO County Housing met, the most significant item there was the adoption of the budget.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johannesen. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. Last Monday, the 11th, was the meeting of the YOLO County Transportation District. The most meaningful thing on that agenda was around the development and planning of the proposed YOLO Bus Downtown Shuttle System. This is a result of the work being done in preparation for the new arena being built in downtown Sacramento. There will be some changes to some of the routes, most, most of it will be the, what the district is trying to do is mimic some of the work that was done and the changes that were done as a result of the Fix 50 back in 2014. And one of the most more popular parts of that was the shuttle service that was created from our transit center right across the street to downtown Sacramento, just continuous, almost continuous shuttles. So there'll be some changes in routes to get there, there'll be a transfer, but the more important thing is that there'll be a steady run of shuttles going back and forth through the night or beginning of the events, end of events, and around those days that events are planned. So for those regular bus riders, please pay attention to changes in the schedule that will be promoted. We asked for that from YCTD staff to make sure they put out tweets. They have a new app out that you can track where bus services at the moment, you're waiting for it. So we've asked them to make sure they share that with cities so we can help promote that, but also as October comes around and the first concerts and the first games at the arena come forward, is to kind of think about your transportation choices. So there'll be shuttling people from Davis as well and Woodland into Sacramento, so they can get across the bridge pretty easily, hopefully. Lots of planning is being done around that, as I think our Public Works Department is involved in that very heavily as well, so lots of planning being done. But that was the main part of that meeting on the 11th, so thank you.
Mr. Ledesma, Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, a couple. The West SAC staff come met yesterday, and that's our flood control agency, and the assessment on a yearly basis, property tax assessments, that staff is allowed to increase by 2%. West SAC staff approved that and said that there will be a 2% increase on our property taxes, so for flood assessment. And the other thing was SAC Regional, we met on July 13th, and that's our sewer sanitation joint approval between the city of West Sacramento and the entire region, Folsom, Sacramento, Citrus Heights, there are lots of people on this. We adopted a draft strategic plan for the Sacramento Regional County sanitation, and we also talked about the future rate increases that we're trying to make sure that stay below that $3 level, and so we are looking at passing on a $3 surcharge on our sewer bill in order to pay for the Echo Water Project, the big project, the $2 billion project that we are, the whole region is involved in. And it's something that the federal government said we had to do, and so we're doing our best in order to comply.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 20th, the Water Resources Association of YOLO County met. The primary focus of our discussion at that meeting was the development of a groundwater sustainability agency, which the Water Resources Association is working on, putting a plan together that will go forward to the state for approval. We all be representing the city on the steering committee that's looking at the plan. We're trying to have one basin in YOLO County that's more aligned with the kind of map of the county versus having, being parts of several basins. There'll be five areas on our basin, this is the proposal going forward, and the city of Sacramento will be considered South YOLO with five other water reclamation districts and also YOLO County land in Clarksburg. So that discussion's ongoing, and we have, we have until next June to put a proposal forward. Also earlier this evening, the YOLO, Sacramento YOLO Port District Commission met, and we authorized the submittal of an application for Cal Recycle Grant that will help, potentially help derelict vessel cleanup, and we may, we may end up being competitive for Cal Recycle's Illegal Disposal Site Abatement Grant Program, speaking of leveraging resources. And also, I had the great pleasure of attending a very successful tour of Stone Lock on Monday. It was, there was an open house, and there were about, I would guesstimate about 100 folks from the community who were very interested in seeing and learning about not only flood protection but the plans that may be contemplated in the future. And later that evening, there was a joint, two of our commissions met together to move forward. And then finally, I participated in ALAFCO planning for YOLO leaders. We meet together as leaders across the county a couple times a year, and in late September, we'll be meeting in Woodland, and the focus in that regard is transportation. I had a lot of support from our city staff in terms of trying to define what might be important to discuss, and I know our Director of Public Works is helping get a speaker at that session, so more on that will be forthcoming. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Mayor Protem Sandin. I have a few, since I was not at the last meeting. So I attended the Clinton Global Initiative. This is President Clinton's major global foundation work. They hold an annual summit of quote unquote "thought leaders" from around the country around a variety of issues, and invited me to come and participate on workforce issues and trying to cook up some potential improvements for how cities and workforce investment boards can help better, help employers in their communities better signal to colleges and to high schools what their actual workforce needs are and better ways of being able to measure career readiness for both the high school and college graduates. It's the work that we're doing with the digital badging that Assistant City Manager Amanda Berlin has been leading was prominently featured in that work as well, as well as the internship work that we've been doing more broadly through summer steps and through future ready in the community as well. So that was, it was a nice feature of some of the work that's happening here on a national, on a national scale. So also invited to present at the Smart Cities International Summit in Montreal, Canada, on stuff that we're not actually doing yet, but that we're thinking about in terms of 21st century's approaches, approaches using technology and other, and other tools to redesign cities around the world, but particularly in, well, obviously for us in the US, and transportation being a key lever, a key leverage point in that regard. So we did a lot of design thinking workshops around taking particular use cases of mobility-limited seniors and others, but particularly those who want to keep working or stay active or stay involved, what transportation solutions and how technology might work in that regard. And I've provided some background materials to Mr. Johannesen and Ms. Sandin about Cubigo, which was one of the standout startups at the Smart Cities Summit around providing essentially the equivalent of assisted living, but by putting together ride sharing, food delivery, and the kinds of technology-based services that are available to folks who don't normally think of themselves as using assisted living that might be millennials in San Francisco. So it was, it was productive. We got, I got a lot of contacts, and I'm hoping to invite the Chief Innovation Officer for the San Francisco Metropolitan Transportation Commission. They were one of the seven finalists for the National Smart Cities Competition. They had, they have a very, very comprehensive and exciting mobility as a service initiative that we're bringing together, thinking about, you know, increasingly, our residents in cities like ours are interested in the journey and not in a particular thing, and so only being able to access Uber and then close that and pull up your bike share app, and after that, pull up your YOLO Bus app and then figure out where can I, might I get a parking place for my car and all of that. What San Francisco is proposing to do is a much, is a much more integrated system that's really around that journey and also recognizes that for many, 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 many trips now, the journey is as important as the destination and that, so it's really interesting work that's happening in San Francisco. They did not win the competition, but they're proceeding with their proposal anyway. I also was asked to keynote at the Jobs Through the Future National Workforce Summit around workforce initiatives and covered some of the same topics I mentioned earlier around summer steps, future ready, future ready, and our digital badging work as well. And then finally, I did attend the annual meeting of the United States Conference of Mayors, which I think half the world is aware of because the Dalai Lama and Lady Gaga were our featured presenters on a panel together along with Hillary Clinton shortly thereafter. But we had some serious work to do there as well. They were there to present on some work that's happening in Anaheim and Louisville and other cities in the US that are structured, structured initiatives around cities of kindness and cities of compassion, and how that's playing out with real metrics and real programs that actually are making a difference in terms of quality of life and community and policing relations and a wide array, wide array of other indicators. But also at that conference, we were asked to do presentations on our work on digital badging, again, the LRNG work that the Assistant City Manager and Ian Windrock from my shop is doing, as well as we co-hosted with AARP, a session for mayors on the livable communities work that Mr. Johannesen and Ms. Sandin are leading here in the, in the city. Also led a tour of Recycle Force, which is a social enterprise. This is a growing model that we don't yet have in our city, but that we're, I'm trying to recruit some here that are, where it's a blended model between, it's a hybrid between a traditional social services program and an actual business. And so Recycle Force is an example where principally folks who are recently, who are recently incarcerated come and work at a facility that sorts materials for recycling. They're paid, the operation has to stay in the black, right, so it's not run as a, it's not a, it's not a social services program in that sense. It does have, it does get some grants and subsidies, on the other hand, so it is also a, it has a social nonprofit mission. More and more of these are popping up. We are partnering with one of them in, in the form of Juma, the partnership that we're doing with the Golden One Center, with the Kings, with young people. That's also a social enterprise, but the potential there in terms of much more powerful workforce effects, particularly for the recently incarcerated, but for a lot of hard-to-employ and hard-to-train populations. So we, I hosted a visit with the Secretary of Labor at that, at that facility, and finally convinced the Conference of Mayors to, it wasn't a hard sell, but to endorse the new Water Resources Development Act, including the provisions that we want with respect to continuing the language that Sacramento successfully got before, that said, once you have a chief's report, you're automatically covered, and some other provisions. And so the Conference of Mayors has basically endorsed West Sacramento's priorities for the, for the Water Resources Development Act and appropriations that will follow. Then closer to home, we had a meeting of the Bike Share Committee, Steering Committee met last week, and we interviewed four different bike share operating firms. We select, we did make a selection that's not been announced yet, but we interviewed firms, some of which operate electric bikes, some of which operate smart bikes, that is bikes that don't require a dock, that you could, you could park or pick up anywhere in any publicly available space. And we interviewed some firms that were hybrids of those. So some really strong, really good standouts, and each of the firms is actually quite optimistic about the, but the land use and the transportation patterns in our core area, because remember the bike share system will serve West Sacramento, Davis, and the grid, Land Park, East SAC, and parts of Oak Park as well. But it's looking strong for, and our plan, and these operators all committed to having bike share on the streets by the middle part of 2017. So we're on track on that project. And we also have a preliminary agreement on streetcar governance that is, returns to the balanced governance between the two cities at the JP, for, so for the, for the Joint Powers Agreement, not necessarily authority, but that the, that the two cities would simply appoint a balanced set of representatives to, to the governing board for that. So the council will recall that there had been a proposal from our colleagues on the other side of the river that it'd be based on something else, that, you know, the amount of money being spent or the population or the land area or, or something, and that we would not have, we would be in the minority on the, on the governing entity for the streetcar. And we've reached an agreement that that would not be the case, that we would, we would share that equally. So those are all my reports.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the work being done at the US Conference of Mayors and to share with the rest of the council and the public. And I was recently participated in the National Hispanic American Entrepreneurial Summit in Washington. It was just sponsored by the White House, and I had the opportunity to meet Megan Smith, who's the US Chief Technology Officer, Assistant to the President. And I mentioned that I was, I was there at a work capacity, but mentioned I was also served on the city council in West Sacramento. She was just at the US Conference of Mayors, and in a blink of an eye, she said, boy, you guys are really doing some good work in West Sacramento through all the digital badging and other initiatives we have going on. So just to recognize the good work that's being done through the Conference of Mayors, through our city staff that's helping make that happen, those types of technologies, we are known in Washington, and I was a direct witness of that through somebody from the White House. So I just wanted to recognize you for, and the rest of the staff who's doing all the work behind the scenes on that. So thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Mr. Ledesma. I actually forgot, one of those, so at the final day of the US Conference of Mayors, there was a technology pitch, and this was modeled after a pitch session that was done at South by Southwest, and so they were, they invited four mayors to present innovative technology, civic technology projects, and they were the mayors of Kansas City, Louisville, Austin, Texas, and you can guess that the fourth one was us, which is good company to be in if you, to talk about technology and innovation, and our staff did a fantastic job of helping to construct the pitch. And no vote was taken, but I think if you ask anybody that was there, we won that pitch session with, with the innovative technology idea that we've been incubating since Code for America around kind of rethinking the way we do civic engagement in a way that meets, meets citizens where they are, but it was a very, very popular, both with other mayors, but also with some of the, the tech industry folks, Amazon and others, that were interested in helping us develop and invest in it, so good stuff. All right, thank you. Then Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissioners. We do have one set of appointments, that's to the Age Friendly Advisory Committee that is being co-chaired by Councilmember Johannesen and Mayor Protem Sandin. And so we, you recall, we had asked each of the, each of our commissions to nominate folks to these, to this committee, but ultimately, the council makes the appointments. So I am appointing and submitting to you for your consideration, in addition to Mayor Protem Sandin and Councilmember Johannesen, Ian Branahan from the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission, Ron Price from Economic Development and Housing, Alex Hirsch from Environment and Utilities, Nancy Levy from Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Services, Alex Kelter from Planning, Vince Wetzel from Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure, and then alternates Anthony Volkar, Mark Campbell, Rohit Nayar, Daniel Clayton, Bernard at Austin, and Joshua Stark. That's, that's my, so I'd ask if there's a motion to approve? That's, that's my, so I'd ask if there's a motion to approve. Mr. Johannes moves, and Mr. Kristoff seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you. All right. That brings us now to item two, which is consideration of a proclamation honoring West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce Chief Executive Officer Denise Seals upon her retirement. First, is there a motion on the proclamation?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by everyone and seconded by everyone else. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Our tradition is that I present the proclamation to the honoree, but I know members of the council have something to say. So before invite Denise Seals up to the, to the podium to receive the proclamation, I would like to ask, invite any members of the council that wish to, to make any, any comments. I remember Protem Sandin to lead off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for your service, and you've, you've just provided tremendous advocacy on behalf of our community businesses and also you developed such a great relationship across from partnering from the city and our, and our staff and the council with all of the work of the chamber. I just feel so proud of the work that you've done and also just full of gratitude for, for what you've done. You've left a great legacy and you've left the chamber in, in really good shape. And I'm just looking forward to even the foundation that you've laid, I'm looking forward to what's ahead. But I really want to thank you, Denise, tremendous.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. And just, I can barely see Denise back there, but there she is. Thank you. But thank you so much for your service. You know, I would say limited to the eight years you've been in the chamber, which you've done a remarkable job with the chamber. And you have much to be proud of as a community, the business community is so proud of everything you've done. You've elevated the status of that chamber. You've ushered in the era where we, they were actively involved in things, things like cap to cap and being involved more regionally, making our presence beyond just the five council members more felt around the, the region. So thank you. But your service goes beyond that, and it's been unprecedented in these parts for some time. So it's been a natural extension for you to kind of lead that chamber to new heights because you've been doing it throughout the community since I've known you. So congratulations, and I know this is just another beginning of something else for you. And I look forward to whatever that adventure brings. So, but congratulations to you.
Mr. Johannes.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Denise for your service back in the day when I was on the board of the chamber and working with you back then. You know, we really saw this, the chamber under your leadership become more of a partner with the city. You see a lot of chambers, I mean, their mission is really to go against government or go, you know, they have, they become very polarized and, and they want to fight over issues that are, are important, but probably what is more important is the cooperation that you've been able to instill in that organization and the, develop the partnerships with the city that have really made the chamber thrive and the city thrive as well and the businesses thrive as well. So, and I think that was all based on, you know, how you operated the chamber and the people you had around you. So I appreciate that, and I know there's going to be some retirement things coming up here, bigger events for this, but I'll save the comments to then.
Yeah. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Oh, I will echo what my fellow council people have said. Denise, you've done a really, really good job as far as assisting the business community and making the business community work with the city council. And that, that, sometimes that's a difficult task, but at the same time, I think the relationships that we have developed over the time has been something that is positive. I think that by us taking various proposals to your internal organization and explaining where we are going with those various proposals is very, very important because it raises our comfort level that we're doing the right thing. And so I really appreciate all that you have done. Thursday night for, is, is great, you know, and you have been pushing that and pushing that for years. And it's, it's turning out to be something really, really good. So I'm gonna miss you. It'll take some time for me to develop the relationships that I have with the new president because you're gone. We could always count on you to, if I knocked on your door, you were gonna answer, and we could go through and talk about whatever issues we needed to talk about. And so I'm looking forward to that, same kind of relationship with the new president, and I want to be at your party. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise wasn't born here? Me neither, but Denise was not born here, but I can't, it's hard to think of anyone who better exemplifies what our community is all about and why we, why we win and why we succeed and why we care about each other than Denise does. I mean, it's just, I mean, I agree completely with everything that my colleagues have said. It's, it's, it's all true. I mean, the, the chamber is in such a different place than it was, and the city's in a completely different place than it was as a result of Denise's leading from the heart, while also, you know, it should be tough. I know we've got plenty of our own staff, and Carol Richardson's somewhere in the, in the building. Denise is, she, she leads with a, with a, with a, with a smile and with a hug, but she wants to get the thing done tomorrow in the way, in the way she, the way that she had envisioned. And that's been, that's proven to push all of us to be better and then to, and then to celebrate together when we do succeed, which has been over and over and over again. We'll read the proclamation in a bit that articulates just a handful of the things that Denise has been doing. But if you, you could not have imagined our chamber 20 years ago being the go-to place for, for executives from Japanese multinational companies to feel the most at home, because Denise has been one of our core partners in not just recruiting companies, not just cultivating companies, but making them feel like they're a part of this community and that our success is shared. And sticking with them, even once they sign on the dotted line and they move in and we've issued all the permits, Denise is still there tomorrow to make sure that they're happy and that they are profitable and that they're, and that they're succeeding. And she's made the city as business-friendly as you could possibly be without having to be the, without being a typical chamber CEO that so often makes, makes government seem so off, creates, you know, evil in the government just so that the chamber can ride in on a horse and save it and, and then get its membership up. That's, I mean, that's the typical chamber strategy. Oh, my God, the government's about to do this, but you need us in order to stop them from doing it. That's never been Denise's approach, because you don't, you don't do that in yoga, you don't do that in, you don't do that in jam-making, that's just, you don't, you don't get jam and you don't get, you don't get your, your practice or your poses right if that's how you proceed. And so Denise has brought a different flavor of, of leadership to the chamber. And I know she's transformed the chamber members, the chamber, the CEOs in our, in our, in our city who've seen a different way of leading and I think are better for it. I know I am. So thank you so much, Denise, for, for everything that you've done, the farmer's market, the, the work on future ready and on kids, and every time there was something to be done with schools, you were there, the neighbors fair, just project after project, your service on the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission. And then just so often, when, when anything was going wrong or, or might go squirrely, you just needed somebody to help, you knew you could count on Denise. And even if there's nothing Denise could do, you knew she'd bring over a pie or a smile or just something or jam in order to help you get to the next, to the next day. And so I know we're all, we're all gonna miss Denise as a partner. We will still have Denise as a friend and as a neighbor and as a contributor to the, to the health and the progress of our community, but we couldn't be prouder to honor, to honor her tonight with this proclamation. So Denise, if you'd please join me at the podium. So this is a, I'll turn to face your husband and your fans. This is a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing Denise Seals on the occasion of her retirement as the CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Denise Seals became the CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce on July 1st, 2008. And whereas, under her leadership, the chamber increased its membership by over 25%, supporting its members through advocacy, information, networking, and coordination with the city. And whereas Denise developed an effective and productive partnership with the city to support business retention and expansion, improving the city's outreach to local companies and solidifying West Sacramento's business-friendly reputation. And whereas Denise participated with other community leaders on several cap-to-cap trips to Washington, D.C. to provide advocacy on issues that matter greatly to West Sacramento businesses and residents. And whereas Denise's creativity and enthusiasm for producing quality community events like the farmer's market and dig-in dinners, the holiday tree lighting, and the mayor's State of the City address have strengthened community pride throughout West Sacramento. And whereas prior to becoming the chamber's CEO, Denise served on its board from 1998 to 2008, was its president and chair in 2002, and was a founder of the West Sacramento Neighbors Fair. And whereas, in addition to her chamber role, Denise has served on the city's Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission since its formation and is currently its chair. And whereas Denise has been active in the West Sacramento Rotary Club since 2003 and became the organization's first woman president in 2006. And whereas, through her dedicated work with the chamber and her volunteer activities, Denise has demonstrated a deep passion and care for West Sacramento's past, present, and future, and has earned the respect, appreciation, and admiration of its community and business leaders. Now therefore proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento hereby recognizes Denise Seals' contributions to the community and local economy and extends its best wishes for Denise in her retirement from the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we go around the podium?
Thank you so much, really. It's, this is an amazing place. It's an amazing place to live, it's an amazing place to work, and it's supported by incredible leadership, a staff that just never quits, that, that starts with yes and works to completion. So it's been an honor. David and I appreciate this very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Denise. Before we proceed to the consent agenda, I also want to note for the public and for our vast viewing audience that tonight we're joined by many or most of our Sacramento Steps, of West Sacramento Steps interns that are participating in the program for 2016. And so if I could ask the Sacramento, the West Sacramento Steps interns who are here, if you'd please stand. And since we're just a handful, the mics won't pick it up, so we won't be able to, we won't, we won't have this at home, but I would like to ask each of you to just tell us, tell us your name, where you're going to school, if you are, and what department you're in. Why don't we start with you?
My name is Charles Rascagut, Public Works Department, Public Works.
Where? Where, where are you, where are you doing your senior year of high school? All right.
I'm from, 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 I'm It looks like there's going to be something takes until 2017.
That's right. That's on the, the tenant improvements inside the actual pods at the barn. The canopy is substantially done.
Going to take over a year, or a year to do those?
We don't know the exact schedule. We know they're working with an operator right now on, on setting that up, but given that tenant improvements can take about a year to complete in restaurant spaces, we, we felt that given until July of next year would be a reasonable timeframe to complete that portion of the project, while, while the rest of the project is used as the shell for outdoor events.
Yeah, I see the shell out there and everything ready to go. It seems to me, how did you arrive at the figure of $2.1 million to put up front?
So the basis for that was going back to the original budget of the project and looking at the city's contribution. And, and there was an allocation that was roughly estimated at that point on how much would be allocated towards the, the shell, how much would go to tenant improvements. So that was the basis for the split between 2.1 million and, and, I'm sorry, 500,000.
Right. So I, I guess the, the concern that I have, it seems like we're putting up too much money up front for the, just the shell. I mean, it, the guts of the thing are going to be the, the kitchen and all that other kind of stuff, the tenant improvements. That's going to be the guts. So I, I just have some concern about putting so much money up front and only having an additional 500,000 left after the, the monies are all spent.
And, and in this case, we have a development partner who is, is obviously heavily invested in this project. We, we feel that they have plenty of motivation to complete the tenant improvements because that was really, you know, the ultimate use of the project was going to be for a restaurant use. So making it 2.1 million for the, for the canopy portion, we felt because it was substantially complete, the developer did experience some delays and complications in the construction, felt that it was appropriate to separate out the, the two portions of the project and have the 2.1 be paid now with the 500,000 left for when the restaurant was finished. And, and given the developers' goal for the project, we feel like there's very little risk of, of it not being completed at that time. And 500,000 is still a substantial amount of money to, to carry that motivation forward.
Now, if there are any cost overruns that is borne by the developer?
That's right. I don't believe the contract. Yes, that's right.
Okay. All right. I wish that the figures were reversed, but, you know, I guess, you know, it is what it is, so. And I know that the developer has many, many other projects that are within the general vicinity. So I know that we're going to be able to get this project completed even if the $500,000 isn't enough, because, I mean, it seems that 2.1 for the shell is excessive.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. And I, I guess my, my question is around the use of it, because I think we'll, I could get comfortable with the 2.1. I am comfortable with it because it comes along with usage right away, right? So while the tenant improvements are on, the agreement we had, partnership we had with SGI on this was that the city would have some programming around it, and we've already started that process, correct?
That's right. So the, the plan here is that a temporary C of O would be issued for the, for the shell of the project. That would allow SGI or Fulcrum to go ahead and program events, and also the city to use its, its share of the events. So it gets active until the tenant improvements in the restaurant are done, and ultimately it's open on a more regular basis. But at least for the next year at the most, there would be the opportunity to host events there. Fulcrum is already working on a weekend sort of event that would be a regular scheduled thing. So, so yeah, that, that is one of the benefits of this approach in that it allows it to open in two phases as opposed to keeping a requirement for the full C of O, which means it wouldn't be done until as long as next summer.
Right. Because part, part of the attraction of, of the barn is it's just around the space it creates, that the place that bicyclers using the, the path, coming across the river, coming from South Park through the new Colaxford Ranch Line Trail through the McGowan Bridge, they're all, it's becoming a natural gathering place. And my, I, I do respect and, and agree with Mr. Kristoff's concern around this. We just have to get using it. I think that's been sort of, maybe if there's frustration in the community, it's like, when can we actually start going there and doing things? And so if we are working on the fast track towards that, and the city has, are working in concert, it's just the one way, and I'm, so I'm sensing I'm getting some assurance that we are actively working with them on programming for sometime, this summer, correct?
That's correct. The Parks Department's taking the lead on developing a, a, a programming policy for, for the city events, but, but Fulcrum is actively pursuing an operator for at least weekend use of the barn. And then on the, on the off days, it would still, like, like kind of to your point, it would still be open, there's landscaping, it's an interesting site on the riverfront. It would be, we, we think an attraction for people to, you know, really see it operational. It would be a good thing for the Bridge District.
Aaron, is, is the second pod entirely restrooms, or?
I don't believe so. I believe it's, it's a combination of restrooms and maybe storage space, or maybe, I don't know if there's seating in there, but to be honest, I don't know exactly out of the two pods.
Because the, the activation potential of the, of this, of the site, I mean, in some sense it could be three-stage, right? It could be the, this first stage where neither pod is open.
Right.
If, if, if the bathroom portion was delivered earlier than the restaurant, than the main restaurant space, the kinds of events and the, and the cost of some of those events changes if you have some bathroom access, because there's no, there's no other bathrooms.
It would be, it would be temporary bathrooms.
Yeah.
You have to use.
Right, which you have to, which you have to bring in. It changes the nature of the, of the space as something other, and I'm not talking about off-the-grid or some sort of like formal big thing, but the, the ability of the space to be sort of pop-up ready for folks to have, to have more organic events as opposed to, you know, sponsored by Mark Friedman and the City of Sacramento style, West Sacramento style of events. So if there's, if there's a way for us to incentivize that, you know, because the, I, I, it's just, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with that second pod, the details of it to know whether or not it might be, it's, it's as complicated as the restaurant space, but it would seem like it would be of value to us in terms of events and activation if the, if the bathrooms were brought on, and as soon as they could be. I'm not saying drop the restaurant in order to focus on bathrooms, but if it's possible to bring, to accelerate that component of it, then that would, that would increase its value to us on an earlier stage.
We can definitely revisit that idea with, with Fulcrum and see if there's a way to accelerate the, the improvements in that one pod. Without knowing the construction phasing exactly out, I can't say if that's possible, but we can, we can definitely look into that with them.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I get, I, I also share Mr. Kristoff's concern. I, I mean, recognize that, that the develop, the other develop, the private sector developer is also taking a pretty big hit on this because of the amount of time that this is, that they have been paid by us because of the delays, which is neither their fault nor ours. Well, it might, it's somebody, it's such a, it's such an amazing world's, world-class art project that's never been built anywhere else, that it just turned out to be a lot more complicated in, in a lot of ways than, than was originally anticipated, because no one has ever built this before anywhere in, in the inhabited universe. And so that, that happened, and most of the cost of that has been borne by, by the, by the developer in that sense. So it, there, there has been a price to pay for that delay, but I think the concern's right, but it seems, I, I agree that activating the space does provide us that initial value, and we will have other opportunities if something, you know, something were not to proceed in order to force it along.
Okay. No, it's, it just sort of bites at my craw, but, you know. It's not a way you build a house.
Correct. Mayor, are, then are you proposing that we break out the 2.1 and include, say, 1.6 and 500? No, I don't, I don't think we know enough to, you know, right here tonight to, to figure all that out. I, I'm just, I was just suggesting that, that, you know, at the staff level that we, that we, you know, if, if, if it's feasible, makes sense, it doesn't delay the overall project, there, there's no reason to, if you can finish the bathroom early, don't keep it closed until the restaurants are open, because we could use it for, in order to activate the space.
Yeah, I'll start with talking to Charlene and see if that's even a possibility, given the phasing and.
Okay, she's giving me this, which might just mean it's okay to talk to her, but.
Probably.
Okay, thank you. Item 10 is consideration and award of the contract for tree maintenance services in the Bridgeway Lakes Community Facility District. Mr. Kristoff.
Hey Dana.
Good evening.
I'm trying to figure out the math.
Okay.
Because in the annual bid price, the bid price was 92,000. The annual, the annual negotiated price was 79.
Correct.
And then the three-year contract is 263. Well, if you multiply three times 79, you don't get to 263. What's?
Well, we included a contingency amount of $23,981, just in case something came up that we needed to fix.
Okay.
You know, we typically don't use it, but it's nice to have it there, just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions or comments on the consent agenda, is there a motion? It's been moved by Mayor Protem Sandine and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. That brings us down to our time set agenda, item 15, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 14 dash 46 certifying inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water, sewer, and refuse services on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that Alene be placed on the subject properties. Ms. Connor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Claire Connor, from the, I'm, I'm the supervising accountant from the Administrative Services Department. At the end of each fiscal year, we rely on the annual transfer of the delinquent amount to the property tax, tax bill for collection. And this process began in June by mailing a notice to all customers with a delinquent main balance of at, at least $175. These notices encourage the property owners to pay or contact us for questions. The final step is to hold this public hearing to request council's approval of transferring these delinquent accounts to the property tax rolls. As of tonight, the total delinquent amount has, has been reduced to 850,000. We will continue accepting payments through July 29th, and the final list will be generated in early August. Staff in finance will make sure the final delinquent list submitted to the county is prepared accurately. With that, I would like to return this item for public hearing.
All right, are there, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Then we will open the public hearing on item 15. We don't have any requests to speak on this item, but it is a mandated public hearing. So does anyone wish to address the council on item 15? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for any further questions or discussion, or for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Mr. Johansson moves, and Mr. Kristoff seconds the adoption of the resolution and the staff recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Item is adopted. Item 16 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 16 dash 31 certifying the list of weed abatement charges directing that Alene be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Johnson from the Fire Department, for the record. It's directed by Resolution 1630, which began the 2016 weed abatement process. The Fire Department noticed the property owners' properties had weed nuisance causing a fire hazard. I'm here tonight to bring a close to that process. Those property owners' properties have been mitigated. A list of charges has been created, including a 20% special assessment for those. It is recommended that the city council open a public hearing to hear public comment on those charges, and it is also recommended the city council approve or adopt a Resolution 1631 certifying those charges and directs the Yolo County Auditor to include those expenses in the individual tax rolls. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you. We'll open the public hearing then on item 16. Again, have no requests to speak, but it is a mandated public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council for a question, discussion, or for a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
And Mr. Kristoff moves, and Mr. Ledesma seconds, adoption of the resolution and directing the county auditor to add the expenses to the tax rolls. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, motion carries. Item is adopted. Item 17 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 16 dash 50 certifying the load of, the list of code enforcement charges directing that Alene be placed on the subject property and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Mr. Burke.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Burke, the Code Enforcement Manager. This evening's item is, is regarding a, one single property that has outstanding code enforcement fees effective as of the end of May. This particular property actually went to hearing in June of last year, so this property owner has been notified by monthly invoice every month regarding the outstanding fees and regarding the violations in general. Regarding this particular public hearing, the property owner was also hand-delivered a notice that advised that this would occur. The fees that are listed in the amount of about 100, I'm sorry, 1,907 and some change remain due as of today. That amount will be verified prior to transferring to the tax roll, if that's the direction that the council gives. And with that, I gladly would answer any questions and ask that the council open a public hearing.
Are there any questions at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will open the public hearing on item 17. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council. Question, comment, or a motion?
We'll move the item.
It's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mayor Protem Sandine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Item 18 is a public hearing to consider Resolution 16 dash 23 adopting the Community Development Block Grant 2016-2020 Consolidated Plan and Resolution 1624 adopting the CDBG Annual Action Plan for 2016-17. Mr. Laurel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Louise is going to go through a brief presentation in a moment. Before that, I just wanted to introduce this item and, and talk about it in the context of the city's overall community investment strategy. You'll recall the Community Investment Action Plan was adopted in 2012, and it identified becoming CDBG entitlement as one of its priorities. It contemplated that CDBG would become a modest but reliable source of funding to, back to that theme of leveraging other funds, including the city's community investment funds, Measure G funds, a future IFD, the Housing Trust Fund, and other state and federal grants to invest in infrastructure parks and affordable housing in key investment areas. So as we become an entitlement city, we're trying to set up our CDBG program in a way that keeps it very focused and to leverage other investments that these strategic funding sources, to have the highest return on investment, community impact, and do it in a way that keeps the CDBG program manageable for a city of our size and a staff of our size. So I just want to emphasize that CDBG is not the be-all, end-all for community development funding in this city. We just, just like we've done with our other CDBG state funding, we plan to leverage these funds many times over as we go forward. So I also wanted to just quickly recognize Louise for her work on this item. She's shepherded the city through years of state CDBG, the program there, it's been a little more difficult in entitlement, but we're lucky to have her because she's worked in an entitlement city before, and she's helped us through developing the con plan and action plan, which most cities require as a consultant to undertake, so I just wanted to quickly recognize her for that. So go ahead, thanks.
Good evening, Louise Collis, Senior Program Manager in the Department of Economic Development and Housing. The city has received Community Development Block Grant funding known as CDBG through the state small cities program since the early 1990s. And as you all are aware, CDBG funds originate from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we're very pleased that the city now qualifies for the federal CDB entitlement program. We're here this evening to ask that the council conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the draft five-year consolidated plan and annual, annual action plan required by HUD for entitlement grantees, and following the hearing, adopt resolutions approving the documents. Because the purpose of this item is to receive public comment, my presentation will be brief. You've seen this before, the CDBG primary objective does not change when you move from the state to the federal program. It's to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities for our lower-income households. And slide three also is the same. These are the CDBG national objectives. All CDBG-funded activities are required to address at least one of the national objectives. All CDBG-funded activities are required to address at least one of the national objectives. Benefit to low and moderate-income households is the primary objective, but also we have eliminations of slum and blight or urgent needs such as earthquake or flood damage, unplanned-type urgent needs. Here's just a brief overview of a few of our state-funded activities over the years. This could have gone on for three slides if I'd put them all down, but the sewer installation project in Arlington Oaks was a huge project for that neighborhood. We've done job creation projects, down payment assistance for low-income homebuyers, rehabilitation of affordable housing, both multifamily and owner-occupied, and many planning studies that have led to development of CDBG projects or other projects, such as the farmer's market and those sorts of things. I do apologize for the quality of these slides. This came directly from the HUD mapping program that is associated with the consolidated plan system, but I just wanted to give you an overview because a lot of the consolidated plan talks about particular census tracts and issues in particular census tracts. So this lets you see, the two that are primarily discussed in the plan are the Washington Neighborhood, which is Census Track one oh one point oh one. It's basically east of Cagle. And Census Track one oh two point oh three, which is primarily industrial area with some residential around the Everglide and Evergreen neighborhoods. As you can see, those two, the green slide talks about, let's see, the green slide, excuse me, the green map is income levels. Those are the two lowest-income level census tracts in the city. The purple slide is poverty level. They also have the highest level of poverty. So the consolidated plan process under HUD requires that we set five-year goals, and HUD requires that in the consolidated plan they be identified as either high priority or low priority. Based on many, many hours of discussion with service providers, with neighborhood residents, in public hearings, focus groups, we are recommending two high priority goals of reducing the impact and incidence of homelessness and implementing recommendations from the Washington Realized Strategy as our high priority. And for low priority, strengthening economic opportunities for low-income households and increasing awareness and understanding of fair housing laws in West Sacramento. This slide gives an overview of projects currently underway that probably would be eligible for CDBG funding if we had had this federal funding last year or the year before. Currently, some of those projects are funded through our state CDBG grant. The final grant expires in a little over a year, so we're kind of double-dipping this year. We have both state and federal money. It's kind of nice. But as you can see, CDBG funds, where it says funding sources, we have a total of over nine million dollars. CDBG funds is about, our federal funds at least, is about six percent of that total. So it's a, as Mr. Laurel said, it's a small but reliable source of funding. Project types, the main two project types are affordable housing development and infrastructure projects, but there's also a lot of funding going into services and parks. When we get into the federal entitlement program, when we no longer have state funding, the amount of services that can be funded with CDBG will be dramatically reduced because we're limited to no more than fifteen percent of our funding to fund services. So it's got to be primarily capital projects.
Louise, go back to that other, back...
Okay.
If you can. My concern is, is if the top priority, keep going back, if the top priority is for homeless...
Could you go back for me, please? Yeah, that's a pri, yes.
Are we taking money away from building? You said earlier that you had to build something, you know, the, it doesn't seem like the, reduce the impact and incidence of homelessness qualifies for the construction of, of a project or the construction of housing or the construction of something.
Well, remember that we're looking at, the consolidated plan includes goals for more than just the CDBG funds. So right now, we're paying out-of-state CDBG funding for the full-time homeless coordinator, and he's been very, very effective. He works out of the police department, works very close with both our police department and county social services. So that is one piece of that. Another piece of that is to increase housing available to homeless or formerly homeless, and so that would be looking forward at projects, maybe possibly developing a project, but also just looking for innovative solutions to getting people into housing. You know, working with landlords to create a program so that landlords would accept someone if they had, you know, wraparound case management services. It can be done in a number of different ways. We haven't specified exactly how that's to happen, but that is the goal, is to do those two things. One, for the homeless services coordinator, and two, for finding innovative ways to get folks into housing.
And if I could just add to that, there is an admin portion of the CDBG entitlement funds, so twenty percent of the money can be used for essentially staff, planning, admin, and the homeless coordination aspect of that could be included in the administration portion. So you're right that the other eighty percent, you can use it all for building facilities and that sort of, that sort of thing, but there is the opportunity to use a portion of the admin directly for homeless coordination activities.
Okay.
Okay, great, all right. Okay, now I'm going the wrong one. There we go. Okay. So the consolidated plan is a five-year plan with goals, overall goals addressing the needs identified in the study. The annual action plan is a smaller document, and that says, okay, given what we, the goals that we want to accomplish over a five-year period, what are we going to do with our CDBG money this year? So the proposal is to use two thousand sixteen, seventeen funding towards the development of the Riverwalk Park Trail. There is a section between the I Street Bridge and the Broderick Boat Ramp that is not improved, and so it is not accessible, it does not have ADA accessibility, it is not necessarily safe for bicyclers to be up on the levee, on that gravel path, especially if they're commuting early morning hours, late evening hours, it's dark, it has no lighting. So that is the plan, is to develop, to work on a project. It'll be leveraging local funds, so CDBG will not only cover, I think, maybe about a third of the project. We are going to use this year's funds plus program income received this year and possibly next year's funds, depending upon, once we get the engineering and design back and we see the total construction costs and see how that fits in the budget. This diagram is directly out of the Washington Realized Strategy document, and you can see the section that says, I think it says unpaved up there on your, the right-hand side. There is, and one more document, complimentary to the consolidated plan that HUD requires, it's called an Assessment of Fair Housing. It requires a review of relevant HUD data, and the city will be required to complete this assessment within nine months of receiving the data. HUD has not crunched our numbers yet. So we expect to receive the data sometime during this year and then get started on the Assessment of Fair Housing. HUD is starting to recognize the fact that city and jurisdictional boundaries are, don't always make sense, and so they're encouraging regional planning for CDBG, which was never allowed before, never. So we have actually been talking to Sacramento City and County, City of Davis, City of Woodland, about doing a regional assessment of fair housing because these issues are greater than West Sacramento, and we have similar issues throughout the region that can, should be addressed collectively. We think we would be more effective, but because of some quirks in the HUD guidelines, it's a little more complicated, but we are talking to HUD about that. So we'll be bringing this back to the council once we have more information. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any more questions.
One other thing, at your dais, there is a letter that, the staff has prepared a draft response to letters received as part of the public comment process, this one from Legal Services Northern California. So our plan was to create the draft response that would be, proposed to be signed by the mayor, following the direction tonight, we would submit that letter back to Legal Services. Thank you.
All right, are there questions for Ms. Collis? Mayor Protem Sandin?
I just have a quick, a quick one. In the slide that had the high priorities and the low priorities, it really, meaningfully, it really is high priorities and probably lower priorities. It doesn't mean that they're not important. It just means in terms of our priorities going forward, the two highest are the main focus, but these other things are also important, just not as significantly. It's just, it's just when you read, when you see that, it's in the report, when you read the report altogether or the proposal altogether, it makes sense, but just seeing the slide, it just seems like, oh, and we don't care about these two things. But just wanted to get that clarified.
Yes, you're correct. And we could have prioritized many different types of activities. Those are the four that we prioritize, but HUD requires us to say which ones are our high and which ones are our low priority, and that's the HUD phrasing I can't change.
Right.
Well, but could we, could we use our own term and put in parentheses HUD lower, low priority or something? No, it's just something, because it stuck out to me too, you know, those, those are just the secondary priorities. They're not, they're not, just the way that, I mean, the emphasis gets on the word low and not on priority, but, so if there's, you know, in our own doc, maybe in the plan that we submit has to say that, but in our own communications, you know, internal and in the community, we, it seems like it's a good point, I think, to...
We'll look at that wording.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thanks, Louise. A good job on putting this together. I think kind of the main hits that I thought were very, very productive was looking at this, being able to look at housing from a regional perspective, which I think is absolutely essential, based on the boundaries. There's really no boundaries in terms of people finding homes in this particular area, a jurisdictional boundary, it's more regional. And then also the impact that you're seeing on our homeless coordinator and the effectiveness of being able to connect the services, which is really critical in that. One of the goals is to reduce the impact or incidence of homelessness. Now, that's, it's kind of a, it's not really anything, it's not a goal that you really can meet, there's really no way to measure that. It's very broad and...
Well, we have to report on this annually, so we will have to measure it. How we measure it is up to the city, but I think we would measure it in, how many people did our homeless coordinator actually put into housing? They're no longer, not only are they not on our street, they didn't go across the bridge and be homeless in Sacramento, or they, you know, they didn't drift into a temporary living situation and end up back on the street. Those are the kinds of things that I would expect us to count next year when we're doing our first annual report to HUD.
All right, so at this point, we don't really need to deal with the measurements, we just need to state the overall goal, which is good.
Correct.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Are there questions at this time? All right, then we will, thanks, Ms. Collis, Mr. Laurel. We're now going to conduct the public hearing then on item eighteen. So anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll return it back to the council. I had a couple comments as well, and just to pick up on Mr. Johansson's last point, on the incidence of homelessness. This is, incidents and the impact on individual homeless individuals are distinct phenomena, right? So that you, if, some of the research about many of the city-based homeless interventions around the country that initially appeared successful, depending on how you, what you consider success, may not have been in terms of the overall, the overall incidence of homelessness in the community, and many of those communities didn't change because it did, you know, as some of the critics had predicted, it did result in more, in more homeless individuals migrating to the community, and that, that's been a real phenomenon. And so you don't change incidents, but even though you have changed, even though you have rescued many, many people from the impact, from the impacts of being homeless. So it's still a good thing, but it's not the same thing as incidence, and it's important, I think, to track those, track those metrics independently because we do care about both things. We want to, we want to help homeless individuals get out of homelessness. We also want to, we do want to reduce the incidence of homelessness and its impacts on the, on the broader community as well, so I think that's a good point. On the census tract issue, I think we, I think we make the point in the, in the staff report, but just to, just to highlight, the vulnerability of the census tract that we are targeting here due to gentrification is much, much, much greater than it is in the other census tract, which has similar demographic characteristics. And so just in terms of where our emphasis needs to be in terms of creating, you know, helping to make, have a neighborhood with more and more amenities and services while also not displacing people from where they live, that's, that's going to be both an opportunity and a challenge in the Washington Neighborhood. It will eventually be true in the other census tract as well, but I think you'd be hard-pressed to think that the Joy Loves Park and the, and the Sycamore Trail and the Bridge Over the Freeway by themselves will induce nearly as much gentrification as what's already happening on the horizon in the Washington Neighborhood. We haven't, we haven't actually had that much, we haven't had much displacement because we had a lot of empty parcels, or so there's nobody, you know, people aren't tearing down apartments or buying up people's homes and kicking them out in order to build, you know, San Francisco-style developments. That's not happening, but it could, and it's much more likely in the Washington Neighborhood. And so it's appropriate, from my perspective, it is appropriate for us to be doing exactly what the staff report recommends and what the commissions have recommended, and that's we focus, we focus our efforts and our resources in the Washington Neighborhood using, using these resources, knowing that we're also applying plenty of other dollars in both this census tract and in the other one. Also, the Riverwalk extension, I really like this as a project, both because it's doable, it's accomplishable, it, and it needs these funds, but also because when we did the Brighton-Broderick visioning strategy several years ago, and we actually brought folks in the community from the, from the neighborhoods together here through a series of workshops and visioning sessions with some facilitators, Mr. Johansson was a key, key player in a lot of that work. And, you know, a lot of the initial, a lot of the initial expectations from staff and from some of us and from others were, you know, when we do this, people are going to, they're really going to insist that we have, that there, you know, that there be a job training center or that there, or that the Social Security Office be moved closer, right? So focusing on deficits, you know, and focusing on, you know, what folks, what folks who aren't from the neighborhood think are the neighborhood's needs, when we convened those sessions, some of those topics did come up, but there, but it was also things like the Culinary Center that ultimately has happened, and Bright Park and the playground and other things for kids, but the one that struck me the most was that consistently in that, in that process, the highest or the second-highest priority was activating the riverfront. It wasn't even in Bright or Broderick proper, it was on the waterfront, and that, that was what the highest priority was. And so, you know, this keeps faith with the actual engagement process that, you know, as folks deliberated together, and they said, yeah, sure, additional job training center would be great or whatever, but, you know, I don't do that every weekend, and I would like to be able to go out to the, to the riverfront and enjoy that with my family and whatever. So I think this, this keeps faith with the project that we had launched a while back and we have been working towards, but that engagement really underscored how CDBG can make a neighborhood better in ways that we sometimes don't think about, particularly when we're thinking about how it's our job to rescue low-income neighborhoods with what we think that they need without asking, and so this, I think, is an important step forward. And the last thing I want to say is, I want to offer, if we, if, you know, if we're running into any challenges with HUD around the regional approaches around fair housing or homelessness, you know, I'm happy to help. The Secretary of HUD is a former mayor, and I do know him, but he won't be the Secretary of HUD for more than a few more months, so if we have an estimate, we should do it, we should do it soon, but absolutely happy to help in order to move this forward. Other, Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Notwithstanding my support for moving the proposal forward, I actually felt that the legal services letters to both the commission and also to the council...
legal services letters to both the commission and also to the council were actually compelling. And so, it was, it was really helpful to see the response letter that was drafted. That was very helpful to me because I, I was feeling that we, we really had kind of potentially missed some important, important work that can be done in that, in that area, and yet, we actually have done a lot. So, that, I think it was really, it's really helpful to have that letter at the dais.
All right. Are there any further comments? All right. So, the staff has recommended that council adopt resolutions 16-23 and 16-24. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
By Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Brings us to item 19, which is the 2015 Water Master Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just say a little word about Cameron Bebe, who's going to make the presentation. This is Cameron's last council meeting, he's going to retire on August 5th. He's a very humble guy.
He looks really sad about that.
He is a.
Looking at the clock, looking at you, looking at us, thinking, oh, God.
Don't let, don't let the look fool you. He's, he's a compassionate, energetic man, and we appreciate all the work that he's done in public works and throughout the city.
Here, here, yeah. Just on behalf of the council, and if others want to say anything, just to add our kudos and our thanks to Cameron, who has had his fingers, his mind, his passion in so many projects around the city. And most of our citizens have no idea who engineers this stuff, but it doesn't, it doesn't fall down, it gets built on time, it gets built on budget, it gets built smartly. It's, so many of the projects Cameron's has worked on have been way ahead of their time in terms of anticipating how the community was going to change and to grow and to improve, and we've been really fortunate to have your expertise and your commitment in our community. So, thank you so much, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we would like to present council with a brief update of the status of the 2015 Water Master Plan Update, where we are to date, and to seek council direction on how to proceed in the future. A contractor was awarded to Crowell Engineers in June of 2014 to prepare the Water Master Plan Update in conjunction with and in support of the general plan 2035 update. The analysis is now complete, the results obtained, and a draft capital improvement program has been prepared. We are now ready to proceed with the financial analysis and rate study phase of the project. As this is a joint project with finance division, I have asked Crowell Engineers to open the presentation with a brief overview of the work performed to date and to present council with the findings and corresponding draft capital improvement program. We will then turn the discussion over to the city budget manager, Nitesh Sharma, to introduce the upcoming financial analysis and rate study phase of the project, and to request council guidance on policy, policy direction, guiding principles, and, and methods to be used to design the water rates. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Chris Cleveland, Vice President of Crowell Engineers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Thank you for having me. Chris Cleveland, Crowell Engineers, Project Manager for the Water Master Plan Project, providing a very brief background on the project, and then moving into the financial piece, hopefully, here in a second. Sure.
Is it super technical, or are the first, are the first few slides like introduction to Crowell Engineers and?
They could be, but they're not.
Could, could we?
No.
Okay, here we go.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so first of all, the goals and objectives of the Water Master Plan. First, we want to identify the infrastructure and the water system that will support the city's general plan, and that's a process where we go back and forth between the draft general plan, the draft Water Master Plan, to see what's possible and respond to changes back and forth. We also evaluate the existing water system for any needs, upgrades, aging infrastructure, any deficiencies that may be identified to meet current requirements for water service. And then we plan for those future water needs to support the general plan, everything from supply of water, treatment, storage, and distribution. Your existing water system consists of a lot of infrastructure, many of it no one ever sees. It's either behind a fence or underground, but very obviously imperative to the water supply for the city, starting with your intake on the Sacramento River, the George Kristoff Water Treatment Plant, almost 190 miles of pipelines all the way up to 54 inches in diameter throughout the city, nine groundwater storage tanks, 10 booster pump stations, and three groundwater wells that serve as an emergency backup water supply. So, all of your water comes from the Sacramento River, it's all surface water, and comes through that single water treatment plant. The first stage in the Water Master Plan is we do an analysis, basically evaluate what the system is and what the system needs to do both now and into the future. So, we look at your demands, both currently and that the general plan will project with any population changes through the demand period, which goes up to about 2035. We did do kind of an additional five-year growth study as well. You can see the projected population growths that are in line with the general plan. We then look at water supply contracts and say, okay, how do we estimate how much water is going to be used? We do demand projections, both average day and maximum day, over the planning period to make sure we can supply water both on an annual basis and on a daily basis and peak hour basis. And then we match water supply, treatment, and distribution capabilities to meet those needs over time. Some of the results that we see then, we identify existing reliability improvements. For instance, because you have one water treatment plant, and if something was to happen at that plant, there is not a second plant to provide backup, we want to make sure you have a high degree of reliability at that treatment facility. We want to make sure that we're supporting the general plan as it continues into the future and becomes adopted in the near future. And then we generate a number of recommendations for the city to implement over the planning period. And so, through the total planning period, which is 2035, we're projecting you'll need an additional almost 12 million gallons of water storage, which consists of six tanks with booster pump stations, almost seven miles of pipelines need to be either added or replaced to meet current fire flow or future fire flow needs, transmission improvements to bring water to new areas of development throughout the city, and then improvements in the water treatment plant. Your treatment plant was originally built in the late 80s with a major upgrade and expansion in 2004. We're now reaching over a 10-year period on all of those expansion items, and so, things begin to age, need more rehab over time, and so, we want to make sure we're building those into the reliability of that plant. So, then we move into what does it mean from a dollars and cents point of view? We take projects, we rank them in criticality and other factors, put them into timeframes throughout the planning period to support both replacement and rehabilitation, as well as when we think the growth may occur during the planning period, and we develop this type of a table, which lays out the various types of improvements on the left-hand side of the table, and then each phase of work broken into five-year increments. So, phase one is 2016 to 2021, and each five-year increment thereafter through the 2035 planning period. And then we add them up and find a total cost for the potential CIP for the water system in each of those five-year periods. This is a draft capital improvement plan. It's still subject to a number of changes, including input from council on spending, rate analysis, payment methods, as well as some final tweaking that we're doing on our side to implement a few minor, small changes from this point on. So, that's the end of my presentation as a, as a backup, an introduction to Mr. Sharma. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any, prior to Mr. Sharma.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question on this, get it. So, this is, there's not an inflation factor built into there. So, for example, 2035, you know, the total project cost now is 90 million, but it could be 200 million for all we know.
That's correct. As, as the engineering part of this evaluation, we provide them all in current dollars. Then, all of the financial modeling takes all of those types of factors into account and provides future dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharma.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nitesh Sharma with the city finance. Today, we are here to seek council direction on some of the policy issues that will help staff and consultant to design a rate plan. First of all, I want to talk about the reserve policy, and in this, we are proposing to have three different types of reserves in the next rate analysis. First is the operating reserves. Operating reserves are based upon 180 days of operations and maintenance budget, as stated in the staff report. The cash flow in the water fund is mostly like within a six-month where we get most of the cash, and the other six months is, it's, we don't have enough, but the expenses are not levels. So, this having 180 days will minimize that, and then also, it's good for, for the rating agencies as well. The second is the capital reserves, and this is the amount equal to the annual contributions from the rate revenues towards capital projects. The third type of reserve we are, we want to establish is the budget stabilization reserve. This is something new. However, in the city, we were doing something like this, where we use cash balance to stabilize rates. So, the idea behind this is that the net surplus each year in the operating fund or the non-rate and fee revenues can be set aside in this fund for future, to manage risks associated with revenue shortfalls. For example, if we have a drought, we could use this fund to balance the revenue and offset expenses. At this moment, the city has funds set aside for operating and capital reserves, and then during the rate analysis, we will determine if there is going to be any rate impact on those reserves. My next policy issue is the water meter program implementation. The city has, the city has to fully implement water meter program by 2018. In this rate study, staff is proposing to switch in batches customers on a flat rate to metered rate upon adoption of the rate plan. We also want to address Measure K credit. As you're aware, in 2014, staff presented a report on Measure K to council on various Measure K programs. Water fund currently is being allocated from Measure K about 850,000 a year. The annual allocation from Measure K pursuant to Measure J was between 562,000 and 675,000. So, with this, staff is proposing in the new rate plan to switch customers from flat rate to metered, and at the same time, phase out the Measure K credit. We also want to address the new debt proceeds based on the capital improvement plan as presented before in the draft form. We will look at issuing some of the new bonds to help improve some of the projects that need to be rehabilitated in the near future. And so, we will look at that, and the rate will be used to fund those bond proceeds. And rehab and replacement, I just talked about that. And rate structure. Staff will analyze the cost of the water system and allocate the cost between fixed cost and variable cost. Staff will be evaluating the rate components to ensure that fixed costs are fully captured in the rate study. This will help ensure that the regulatory requirements are met and the system, water system is operating and functioning properly. These are some of the policy directions we are seeking council guidance on. This will help us and our finance team, HF and H Consulting. Rick and John are here today to answer any specific questions or detailed questions, and I can also answer anything. That concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for staff? Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. This is, it's, it's very complicated because there's so many assumptions going forward, and one of them that, for me, is, I think we just need to be thinking about, and I know it's in the report, is the, the water meter program implementation and how we can take lessons from other places that perhaps have, have done a switch from having a, a flat rate to the, to metering, because if, again, in terms of this whole long list of assumptions, if we, if we're assuming people's use will stay the same when they actually have the feedback about their use, and they can, they can monitor it, and they're, they're paying on that rate, on the use rate, I think that'll, it'll be, it'll be an assumption that we haven't really had to grapple with in the past. And so, I think it's one, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's information out there looking at people's uses when they have moved from a flat to a self-monitoring kind of rate, but I think that, that actually has huge potential to, to have folks really bring their usage down, which I, which I think is a good thing, but when we're actually trying to figure out how to pay for a very complex and big system, that variable could, could have a lot more weight than we might be anticipating. So, that, that was just something that, that was on my mind. Another thing is, I don't know if, I know that we have to, we have to pay for all the, all the services, and I know that some, some utilities, like, for example, PG&E, they will, you'll, you'll cover the cost, and then every so often, you might get some kind of rebate. And I don't know, I don't see that on the list of possibilities in terms of when we're setting rates, but that might be something to consider, is making sure we have more, at least enough, and then if we have more, how do we, how do we possibly handle that going back to ratepayers?
So, a couple of, so the city is about 80% metered, and one of the things we are doing at the city at the moment, we're tracking water usage for each customer, even though we are not billing them on metered rate, but we're tracking and we're providing this data to, to customers. Part of our analysis will include to look at how much water is being used by, and then having a factor to determine that if we do switch, there's going to be some conservation. And to address the second, on the rebate, that's something we'll look at into absolutely as part of the rate analysis.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Nitesh, one of my concerns is, I think, I think Beverly's hit on it, and that is, how much water goes through a meter to keep the rates the same as they are right now? My, my concern is, is when we switch over to meters, people's bills are going to increase because they don't realize how much water there is going through that meter, or that the price per, I'm going to say gallon, the price per gallon of water is too high. Each household uses, I'm going to say, what, 30, 40 gallons a day? And so, that should equate to the amount of water that goes through the meter that keeps the rate the same. We pay $32 a month right now, then how much water does it take to get to that 32 gallons in a monthly, over a monthly cycle? Because that's how you will be able to not have people experience a large rate increase for their water. You just tell them that you get, or we can talk to folks and go out and talk people like this in this setting, or put something in the water bills, or do something that says you, you get to use 50 gallons a day, and, you know, take it from there. Because then they can even look at their meter, and then they can tell how much water they're using per day or per week, or per month, whatever it is.
Yeah, absolutely. Part of the cost of service analysis and the revenue requirement is to go through that analysis. As stated, that we have data and we have consulting team that's going to help with this information, because they are the experts, they do this and other places. So, HF and H is very familiar with this process, so they'll be helping us with this. When we'll come back to council with the rate workshop, we'll be presenting this kind of information.
Right, right. Okay. Mr. Johansson?
Again, I guess, just to follow up on Bill's comments, so, you know, one of the things that we've always talked about when we switch over to water meters is a sticker shock that some people are going to experience. Is there, I don't know, is there, you know, in terms of a policy, I think the rate should cover the cost and no more, but we need to plan for a water system for the future. And I think people understand that as long as the money is going to a legitimate cost. But there's going to be kind of this phase in for some people. I don't know if it's possible that, you know, for example, if you've got a water bill that you could say on there that you're about ready to go to a metered rate based on your use right now, it's going to be such and such, gives you a little bit of time to kind of conserve if that's what you need to do, you know, like a warning type of thing?
Yes, staff talked about our internal discussion about having a three-month period where we will be noticing customers on high usage, because we will know the customers that are using a lot of water compared to the average household usage, and we'll notify them three months in advance, and we'll actually have follow-up letters to them, and we'll be available here at City Hall if they want to come here and look at the water bill. the water bill and look at the, um, how, with the current rate structure, we do have some customers on metered rate, what is their bill going to be at the current level? So that's definitely one of the things that is on the staff's, um, to-do list.
Yeah, I know, I'd like, I'd be interested seeing kind of the statistics of, you know, kind of the percentage of people that are in that range. Uh, I don't know if we've got a real good idea now, but once that starts coming in, just to maybe, um, if we're going to get a report.
Yeah, I actually think, I'm, 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 what I hear Mr. Johansson asking for is, is more than, more than that, more than just targeting the, you know, the heaviest users, but, um, it may seem like a long time ago that we were in the worst drought in history. We're still in a drought, uh, it's just the restrictions are, have been, have been relaxed, but it's still, it's still severe, and, uh, uh, I mean, residents are well aware, I think, from, from, from the success that we had in dramatically reducing, uh, water consumption over, over, you know, a long period of time, they're very aware of, of this issue and ways in which they can reduce their, their consumption, and we haven't seen it bounce, you know, all the way back to the pre, to the pre-drought levels either, and so, you know, one of the, one of the requests that we got over and over again during that period was, well, if you would just, I'm cut my water use a lot, but my neighbor hasn't, um, and I don't, I'm not getting the, I don't get anything for that, and I want to know, and I want, and I want, and I want my, I want to pay less if I do my part. And so I think that, that, there's been a change in the, in the culture around water use and consumption and, and thinking about, I think, among a lot of, a lot of residents, not just in our community, but everywhere. And so that tool, I mean, I mean, as soon as we know what the rate structure is going to be, if our bills were to say, this is what your bill would have been, even if it's, because some of, many of them will be lower.
Yeah.
Maybe most of them will be lower, and then they'll, then they will be coming here telling us, we think you should go to metering, you know, metered rates even faster, right? But it's, there's no, no reason to only share that information with, with, with heavy water users, I think, you know, everyone ought to have the, if the information's available, everybody have that, uh, have the opportunity to get ahead and start managing, uh, managing their water use towards, towards, uh, conservation. I also think it's, on the master plan itself, um, you know, we, part of our, the, the expenditure concept that, that is behind measure E includes the smart, the smart city infrastructure work, and there's a lot of, there's a, in addition to transportation, um, and, and some other domains, water is a big, is a big area of this domain, so we don't, we don't have a draft of the master plan, all we have is the summary of it, so I can't really tell how, you know, how, how aware this master plan is of, of sort of moving to the next level on sensing technologies, on data analytics, uh, on, um, uh, you know, automation, on integration with some of our other infrastructure systems, you know, if you've asked Mayor Protem Sandin, could you, could you put a Wi-Fi hotspot on every meter, right? So I'm thinking about other, how the, how the systems connect to each other in addition to how they serve just one, just serve themselves, in order to be able to get at things like usage optimization or leak detection, which will become more and more and more of an issue as our, as our system of whatever it was, 139 miles of pipes ages. Um, and so really building in, um, not, not just thinking, what, what does it take to keep the system going, but have the system, you know, evolve quickly, um, in order to, to meet those needs, and also to provide more tools for conservation, um, as well, and, and for detecting contaminants and other sorts of things that, that, that other cities will be doing, and our residents will expect the same, you know, that, that they'll, if there's a leak that's affecting their water bill, that they'll want to know how to, how to find it. Right now, we don't have good ways to do that in our system, or if, if somebody, if there's a contaminant that's leaked in at some particular location, our, our, our technology, our sensing technology is, is, it's okay, but it's, you know, it's not going to be, we, we have to plan for the refreshing of those in order to stay, not on the bleeding edge, but certainly at least aware of what the range of possibilities are. So I hope the master plan, when it comes back to us, will have, if it, if it doesn't already, will have a, you know, will have consideration of, of that. I'm not advocating like we go on and we become the, the world's leading, you know, smart water infrastructure, uh, city, because it has a cost too, right? So it's, so, but we ought to be able to weigh and look at that, what are the costs and the benefits, um, over time and, and make a judgment about, about that. Part of what will be necessary, and I know you're doing this, but it's hard to evaluate this in a vacuum without having the, the comparison information about water rates in our, in our neighboring jurisdictions and the water rate trajectories in our neighboring jurisdictions, and I think we know intuitively, and particularly Davis and Woodland, that, you know, if, if it was just a competition, we could decrease our, our water rates by $10,000, and it would still be less than theirs, but, but looking at the whole region and across the, the band of customers, residents and commercial and industrial, uh, you know, how, you know, we need, we need to know, because we also don't want to price ourselves out of the affordability and economic development domains, um, as we, as we put the plan together. So I think it's a good start, um, and, uh, the, the financial policies that have been recommended here all make sense to me, um, and the directions that they're, that they're heading, the measure K piece, the reserves, everything else, um, but I would encourage us to think about the conservation piece more in the, along the lines of Mr. Johansson said with respect to metering, and then more of this, at least an analysis of, a baseline analysis of the smart city opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, and, and, and I know, I agree with everything that's been said by my colleagues about what we look at in terms of water metering, and, um, I actually had my note about when we're, when we're getting there, talking about, is there a possibility looking at kind of smart techno- smarter technology? So I worry about leaks, leak detection and whatever, um, as, as time moves on, because that, that sort of technology has become available as the resource of water, but, uh, the plan, at, at least the, the process you outlined for, for the, um, water master plan, I just want to commend you on sort of taking this opportunity, because for the last few years, and I'm going to go to something the mayor said, is our water has become a big asset of ours, uh, from an economic development perspective. Um, I think most of our residents, um, understand, especially those that have been here a long time, where we've come from, and we started in our water quality to where we are today, um, it's vastly improved when you hear some of the micro nano breweries around town saying they came here because of the water, and they, you heard a company, uh, headquarters of, uh, Ameri- United States headquarters of, uh, food companies come here because of the water. Um, it's a reason, because we've invested so well in our water infrastructure, and what you're representing here is, okay, there's another phase we need to start planning for. And as the here that we have, I lost the count of how many more storage tanks we have to build in addition to that over the next 35 years and, and miles of pipes. It, 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 it will take more investment on our side, so I, I agree, as the mayor did on time, that, that, the, sort of the, the financial plan you have, um, in terms of providing reserves at all levels, both operating, capital improvement, um, we've seen on other types of infrastructure, I'm thinking mainly of our roadways, how that kind of funding has dwindled over time because of changes in the economy and how that gas tax has dwindled at the federal level that you don't get that, and I worry about things like this. As we plan going forward, are we going to have enough money to pay for this infrastructure to keep that water quality the same? But the other part of the, so the thoroughness and the approach you're taking, I, I 100% agree with, but I also want to make sure we get to what, what I hear my colleagues talking about is the transparency, making sure everyday folks, myself included, I have a hard time understanding the, with the water, getting the water bill and knowing what I used and how it's calculated. We need to make sure we do a good job of communicating that, have some transparency on, on how we're, how the rate was put together, um, so that folks, especially as we go to the metering system, they have a good idea that their, their dollars, which I know are always hard to go write the check or cut the, the debit card out, or your, you know, whatever, however you pay your bill, um, it's hard to put in, but, but they need to know what we're investing in. It's not just us, it's 30 years, your kids and their ability to come back here, have the same opportunities to have good quality water, um, which sometimes we take for granted. So, um, I, I like the idea of providing households with a pricing estimate. I, I don't want to say three months is too short, but they, they should start getting a sense of that. I know when we went through the drought, um, we're at a really, uh, peak of the drought, if that's the right word, um, that we started urging people to put in, here's what your water usage is, you can track it, um, and that was really important for us to sort of, as a way to sort of curb behavior. Um, so this could be another way to start getting people adjusted to it, the sooner the better, I, I would say, without incurring additional costs that we're, we're applying for. I, I had a similar thought to, uh, Mayor Protem Sandin on, I want to say the rebate concept, but as we price water and create a rate structure, um, is to make sure, because we are going to have other capital costs, um, that are sort of fixed costs that are underpining it, and finding ways that the rebate, actually, I was going to suggest we look at ways if there's, for months or quarters where there's an overage, that we put those towards the long-term debt of the infrastructure to pay it down, because I think that's happened to us before, rate structures where the projections of growth don't pan out, and maybe that's what we intend by the, by the, by the reserves.
Budget stabilization fund is created for that, so any surplus will go in then, and we'll come back to council to seek approval of how to use that money, either to reduce rates.
Or keep them the same, so we don't have to re-amortize and...
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's perfectly kind of in balance, and what I was thinking is that if those who are investing, sort of paying their bills today, we know we're all paying for a water system that's first in class in the, in the region, um, that we know that there's someplace to kind of keep the rate without any shock to the system, so, okay. But I'm, I'm really impressed with kind of where we're going and agree with the principles you've had, so, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, this item is here just for, for comments and questions?
Yes.
Directions, so we have sufficient feedback?
Thank you.
I know Mr. Beebe does. Great, all right, thank you very much. That brings us into item 20, which is presentation and discussion regarding the 2015 sewer master plan update.
Okay, good evening, council and mayor. First of all, I'm glad our summer steps interns are still around to, you know, get a feel for all our infrastructure planning that we're doing. Okay, let me start with a, you know, brief introduction, um, of the project, and, uh, similar to Cameron, I'll hand, hand it off to Natish for the financial piece. John Wells from West, West Yost will, uh, you know, go over the findings of, of the project.
Okay, um, oh, I'm sorry, uh, this is Vin K. from Public Works Department. Okay, we last, uh, you know, updated our sewer master plan in 2003, and that was mainly to facilitate, you know, connection to regional Sanzlo Northwest Interceptor and for development planning. Now with this iteration, when council awarded the contract to, to do a more comprehensive sewer master plan update, we also took on some additional goals, and that included, um, you know, a thorough conditional, a condition assessment of our network. Um, you know, council had the foresight to annex to SAC, uh, regional sanitation back then, and now we're no longer having to deal with a treatment plant. Currently, as, as we stand, uh, we've completed a draft capital improvement program of what it's going to take, um, you know, to, to account for, and we have a cali- a calibrated, uh, sewer model to, you know, to work with our general plan update. And then, um, you know, prior to tonight, we went to the Environment and Utilities Commission and presented a, a more, a longer discussion, uh, informational presentation where we sort of talked about our sewer systems 101. Uh, with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, John Wells from West Yost, and I'll talk about the findings.
Thanks, Vin. Good evening, I'm John Wells from West Yost, um, the project manager for the, the sewer master plan project. Uh, I'm glad we're following, uh, the, the water master plan project, because this is just the flip side of the, the same coin. The water distribution system is bringing water to residents, and then we're, we're taking it away, and we're using a lot of the same methodologies that they talked about in order to analyze the system as they did. And let me see if I can run this. Maybe I'll go down. At the EU Commission, I actually went over my allotted time by twice the amount. I got excited talking about the project. Uh, Vin promised to throw me out of chambers if I did that again tonight, so this is going to be a very concise, uh, little presentation. Uh, the goals for the sewer master plan were, were equivalent to what we talked about for the, the water master plan. We wanted to support the, the 2035 general plan by finding out what was going to be needed in the sewer system in order to, to support and facilitate that type of growth. Um, and so we're looking at infill, refill, continued urbanization, economic opportunities, and what, what's going to be needed in the sewer collection system in order to, in order to support that. And so we went about that process in, in, in generally the same way that, that was done for the water master plan. The first step is to understand the existing system, what's there, how it's operating, what's going to be needed to keep it operating just at the existing level, and then the second step is to look at what is going to be needed, uh, for the future, so going from that existing system, uh, to the, to the future system. Um, so, uh, this was a very, a very hands-on project. Uh, we went into the field and we put cameras into a portion of the collection system to see what the existing system looks at, looks like, um, from the pipeline point of view. Uh, we sent people to each of the lift stations that are, that are in the system and pump stations that are in the system to look at how those are actually operating on a day-to-day basis, see what's needed to keep them operating, what's going to be needed in the future. And then as Vin said, we took that information, uh, and, and flow information, which is based on some of the water demand projections that were done for the water master plan, put that into a hydraulic model, um, so that we, we understand the future growth and, and what's going to be needed. Um, and that's, and the, the growth is all based on what was, was given for the 2035 master plan, so it's figuring out how we're going to provide sewer service for 28,000 new employees, 18,000 new households, and, and what that's going to require for the, uh, for infrastructure. So if I could have the next slide, please. And all that comes together, both what we did in the field, looking at the collection system, what we did on the, on the model, um, putting that together and looking at the capacity to see what's going to be needed, that comes down to the, to the summarized capital improvement program summary that we're looking at here. One of the things that the, that the, the physical inspection of the system found is that the, the, the condition of the system is, is generally very good, there's some areas that need a little bit of work, and there's also some maintenance areas that are needed, and so there's a line item in the CIP for, uh, more inspection, it's prioritized more inspection for those areas that we think need it the most, and also some more, uh, some more maintenance, um, and cleaning dollars in order to catch up on some, um, cleaning that needs to be done. Um, there's a backyard main CIP, there's a portion of the system where the, the gravity mains are running through people's private property through easements rather than being in the public right-of-way, that makes them very hard to access for regular maintenance and stuff like that, so there's a CIP portion developed, just doing a, a program to get those out of the back mains, out of the backyards once and for all, get them into the public right-of-way. Um, there's dollars that are set aside for rehabilitation and repair, so that's not necessarily building larger pipelines or new pipelines, that's, that's providing, uh, rehabilitation or repair of existing pipelines to keep them, uh, operating in, in a clean and functional way. Uh, there's new gravity main capacity improvements provided to CIP. Um, actually, the, the amount of new gravity main, the amount of new capacity that is, is required is, is probably lower than a lot of us thought it was going to be, um, but because the, the city's done a good job in being conservative with its, its projections for building going forward, and also because of some of the, the demand, water demand reduction means sewer flow reduction as well, so there's actually less new capacity that's, uh, that is, that's required there. Um, there's a line item for the wastewater treatment plant decommissioning. Uh, we did not do a thorough study and cost estimate of that in this, in the CIP, that came more from staff, but the, the, the old wastewater treatment plant that the city was using has been essentially deactivated, but it hasn't been fully decommissioned to the point where that property could be used again, and so there's a, there's a line item in the, in the CIP to, to handle that. Um, there's a, there's a pump station CIP, which is involved with providing some new capacity to pump stations, but then also sort of optimizing how the pump stations are operating. I have to say that I've done 25 sewer master plans, something in that area, I've never seen a, a wastewater pump station system that's as complicated as the city's, it was not easy to model, understand what's going on. There's cases where pump stations are sort of working against each other or, and operating together, that makes it difficult to, to analyze, so there's some, there's some, some tweaking and some changing for optimization that needs to be done to make those operate in a more cost-effective and energy-effective, uh, manner, uh, going forward. And so when we, uh, when we total all those up, summarized it sort of in the same way that the, that the, the water master plan was, was summarized, we see that we have a, a total, uh, capital cost we're looking at, slightly over, um, $50 million. Um, so with that, I'm available to answer any questions about the sewer master plan process, or, um, I turn it over to, to Natish to talk about the, the rate study, um, portion of that process.
Okay, Mr. Sharman?
Thank you. Um, the policies for sewer fund is similar to water, so I was just going to list it out, reserve policy, operating reserve is 180 days, capital reserve, having monies for capital, uh, car, capital expenditures, and budget stabilization, if there's, uh, excess revenues or non-rate and fee revenues that can be deposited here for future, um, subsidy on rates or, um, capital projects, that's, that's full, and then new debt pros- proceeds and rate structure. Uh, and, yeah, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you, you might have on this.
Right, any questions or comments by members of the council? Sewer always gets the... Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on that, it's, it's not, um, I mean, this whole issue of sewer and wastewater and, and waste treatment and water, I mean, it's, it's not that glamorous, but I really respect the people that are doing this kind of work, because this is so critical to health and safety of our people. It's not as visible as police services, but, um, just maintaining good sewer, good water is one of the core elements of a good city, so I appreciate the work you're all doing.
Yeah, when it is as visible as police services, it's, it's a huge problem, and so you...
so you're-
No, you're exactly right. And, and this, this is also simpler than water. We don't, because we don't operate a sewer treatment plant any longer, which is the main complexity on the water side. The distribution system is very important, but it doesn't really, it's, I mean, it's, it's a little easier for us laypeople to understand the piping, even with the, the pump stations opposing one another than it is the, the, all of the intricate technology and financing of the plant itself. So, Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I'd just follow up with that and say that it is easier for us here in West Sacramento because we have, we belong to Regional Sand. And quite frankly, Regional Sand sets the rates. They do, they do a lot of things. So, it makes it easier for us to move this kind of an item forward and, and, and it's not that we're just putting it off, but at the same time, we're following basically what Regional Sand says, and we have a voice on Regional Sand. We sit on, person sits on Regional Sand, excuse me, and they talk about the rates or they talk about whatever issues that are coming up, and we talk about the construction of a new facility at Regional Sand that is that $2 billion component that I've talked about numerous times here. And so, we've got a lot of things in the water that we have to get out, and Regional Sand filters those out and, and puts a good, clean product back into the river. And so, we have to make sure that those facilities are completely up to date, and we pass numerous tests every month to make sure that what we are putting in the river or what we will be putting in the river is of the quality that is necessary.
Right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll have, this is a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Just, just again, back on the planning, financial planning on this is, goes back to what we said earlier, was just, just prudence. I appreciate the prudence you're putting and thought you're putting into, how to set the rates and making sure there's reserves. We don't have, the infrastructure is pretty, I don't want to say simple, not simple to me, but it, we understand that you've outlined pretty well the parts we need to care for. But again, I'm just worried about the financial wherewithal we'll have to make any improvements downstream. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
And I'll, I'll add my appreciation as well, not only for the, the, the planning and the capital and construction side of the, the project side to look forward, but also the, I think the budget stabilization concept. I think that is one that is, is, is definitely, I, I support, support that and also all the, the financial work. I think this, I think there are just fewer assumptions, but not that many fewer with regard to this, this work than the water, but it's equally important. Thanks.
All right. Then this also, this item also is for presentation and comment only, so thank you very much. We'll proceed then to item 21, which is consideration of a collection services agreement with Waste Management Incorporated and seeking counsel direction on the refuse rate design. Benner?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Paulina Benner, Environmental Services Manager. The purpose of the site is to execute the new collection service agreement with Waste Management and to find that agreement exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. We'll also be seeking counsel feedback on the refuse rate setting project, process similar to the water and sewer presentation you just heard, which Natish Sharma will conduct. I'll first go over a few things of the agreement and then turn it over to Natish. In April of this year, staff had presented some initial terms of an agreement to the council, and at that meeting, we asked for and received direction from council to finalize an agreement with Waste Management based on those initial terms. We've since done that. The agreement is attached to the agenda report as attachment to, and it contains all of the programs and fees that we had previously presented to you, so nothing has changed with that regard, as well as the same rates for services as been, has been proposed by Waste Management. The agreement also contains a lot of specific language for program implementation and legal terms and conditions that are typical to such an agreement. There's also exhibits included with this agreement. For example, there's an exhibit that discusses the outreach education and diversion plan, and there's an exhibit that discusses the household hazardous waste at your door program. And the purpose of those exhibits is so that we could actually have explicit roles and responsibilities for both the city and the contractor, so it was clearly understood between both of us. I do want to point out that I did misspeak at the April meeting when I indicated that the pharmaceuticals would be included in the, at your door program. That is not the case after all, and they will be collected at drop boxes that the Waste Management contract will provide at different businesses. So we will have an option in town. It just won't be part of that door-to-door. Just wanted to point that out since I had misspoke at that. One other exhibit I wanted to point out that's with the agreement is exhibit one. That contains, contains the standard rates as well as some auxiliary rates. While many of these rates are existing rates that we have, for example, you know, we already have a rate for picking up extra garbage. Some of those rates have been increased to cover current costs. And we also have some new auxiliary rates that we haven't seen before, such as a contamination rate that would be charged if a customer had contaminated their recycle organics cart more than two times. So these are common rates in other agreements, and they just recover costs that, that the, the contractor would lose that are above and beyond normal services. The, the standard rates for residential, commercial customers are also in that exhibit, exhibit one of the agreement, and they're also compared to other jurisdictions' rates in attachment one to your agenda report. These comparison charts that you have there compare the rates to a much larger regional comparison. You've seen those before, but I also wanted to do a more local comparison in that first slide, Chris, that shows just our residential rates, just to our, what I would consider our nearest neighbors. So when you look at our rates, or not our rates, the proposed rates by Waste Management as compared to the Yolo County cities and the city and county of Sacramento, they are the lowest in this instance. So, and that's even with the new programs that we're looking to add, you know, having an organics program, curbside collection of bulky waste, the at-your-door hazardous waste program, and things of that nature. So I just wanted to, to, to show you and illustrate that just comparing to our most close neighbors that these, the rate package proposed by Waste Management is very reasonable and comparable. The next slide, I did a comparison to the commercial customers, just to the Yolo County cities, because they're the only cities nearest to us that have exclusive services for commercial. City and county Sacramento is a non-exclusive system, which means that the rates are set by the haulers, and they're, they wire very widely, so they're hard to compare. So I just wanted to compare our, our proposed commercial rates just to the Yolo County cities, and you can see again that they're pretty low, the lowest and/or second to lowest in that area. In just in closing, I wanted to say that, you know, we've made every effort to develop an agreement that provides convenient and, and convenient programs and services to our customers, and then will also increase the amount of waste that we divert from the landfill and, and trying to have those programs delivered at, at fair and reasonable costs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natish to do the, the revenue or rate setting process, but I wanted to mention that I'll be available, of course, for questions after his presentation, as well as Richard Degore Irwin from R3 Consulting Group, who helped us with this process, and then staff from Waste Management, too, if you have any questions directly for the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in this rate setting principles, refuse is, is a contractual obligation. So one of the reserve policies, operating reserve, and we are proposing to have a 10% reserve because of the fact we don't have capital cost, and 10% at staff level and consultant level felt is adequate in, in the event there's, is a change in waste hall or, or anything, anything else that might happen. So, another thing is, we also want to establish the same concept revenue stabilization reserve, and that is in any, currently as, right now, we are using our cash balance to offset some of the rates. So with this revenue stabilization reserve, we are, we are asking for these policy guidelines where the money will be set aside and council can direct us in future how they want to use this money, either offset the rates or use it for some other, actually, offset the rate. And then, the last thing I want to bring up is a franchise fees as a policy issue. In the current rate study that is in place, franchise fees are used to offset the customer rates, and franchise fees received to the city are general-type revenues. It's unrestricted. So as you could see, you saw on the slide before, when we were comparing, comparing with different cities, we are still very low with the cost. And then, what we are recommending is bring forward to council as part of the biennial budget, the use of franchise fees, and then council also can direct during the rate process, continue with the current methodology. So that concludes staff's presentation on this.
All right, any questions? We have one question. Kristoff?
I don't know who to address this to, but I'll, I'll just say the question. From, when I was reading this, the agreement, it looked like one of the things that the community was getting was electronic drop-off. In other words, you could put a television or you could put something on the curb and they would pick it up. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Part of the-
Anytime.
Well, by appointment.
Oh, by appointment.
Correct.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch that. Okay.
Yeah, one of the exhibits, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. Actually, it's not the exhibit. It talks about the bulky waste collection and one of the, you know, all the items that can be collected. E-waste is one of them, televisions, electronics, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Paulina, the, the food waste collections and homes not receiving yard waste collection, so this issue was brought up last time. So the, the note that, that's here, that it would be implemented on a case-by-case basis with the homeowner or the property management, can you expand on what that means?
Well, when we were reviewing the types of homes that are in that situation, so we have some smaller condos that have a trash and recycle cart, but they don't have a yard waste cart, which is how we would collect food waste, it was hard to, to just come up with a blanket process for how to deal with that. So, some instances, we may have to have some kind of a situation where there's a, like a joint collection where every resident in that, that particular complex could participate. In other instances, it might just be offered to certain residents that want that, but they don't have to have it. We're also looking at the different areas that have some restraints with curbside set-out and trying to come up with some different ways to provide the service to those folks. It's, it's a little bit of a challenge, so it was hard to come up with a, a one-size-fits-all at this point.
Yeah, although this is also the, 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 one of the largest segments of housing unit growth in the city, so it can't, it can't, on a, on a long-term basis, it has to be, we have to have a universal. It can be, there can be different options within that, but it, it, I, I definitely don't want it to be something that somebody has to call City Hall to do and to make special arrangements, and they get to take a class by Dena and whatever. I mean, it can't be that, right? It needs to be, especially because the kinds of folks who are moving into those places tend to be the kinds of folks who are the most, most interested in composting and, and organics recycling. And so, I, I just, the, the, I'm glad we added this in to deal with the folks that don't have yard waste collection, but we, but we need to be driving towards a universally accessible solution that is the default, not, not a special, not some sort of special request. Is it, is it, is it the contract that does it this way, or is this just our description of how we are intending to implement? Is, is Waste Management obliged to provide it wherever?
Yes, yeah. For, for residential customers, they are obliged to provide the service as part of the bundled rate for car service.
Okay, so how it gets deployed is, is, will be up to us, working with them, but they, but it's, but it's not a, it's not an option for them to say-
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's easy-
They're not the ones designing the rollout strategy necessarily, or are they with us?
With, with the city, yeah. We would be working with them. I mean, they, they are the experts in the field, so I work with them to look to where they've done this in other jurisdictions.
Okay, well, then I just, I'm, I'm trying to say is the, so the policy objective should be to make it as, as universally easily accessible, so that the, the field is the field of food waste, recycling, and organics, but the field is also our land use strategy, where we're the experts. And, and, and we should be insisting that, that this be, that, you know, particularly for the newer developments. So if the, if the curb space is a, is a problem, then as we're, you know, the, as the community development department is, is permitting the construction of new units like this that don't have yard waste, then we ought to, we, we need to account for one more, you know, one more bin potentially. So we, we, both, both sides of the equation need to, we need to come together. We can't just, we can't just leave it to Waste Management as a Waste Management specialization. So-
Understood.
Okay. Any other comments? This one is not a workshop. We are being asked to finalize this one and make a decision tonight, so if there's no further comments, is there a motion?
Could. Just want to add another thing for the record. Obviously, Paulina and R3 did a fantastic job on this, but the mayor has also worked with Waste Management Corporate on a contribution. If this contract is approved, I know, I think it was brought up during our discussions with early learning, but Waste Management Corporate would make a contribution if this is executed of $500,000 to early learning in two installments over the next two years. So we have talked about that before, but I wanted that to be part of the record. Appreciate the chance to work with Alex and Susan Moulton, but really, it's to the credit of the mayor in terms of his connections, mayor's conference, to be able to add this. It's not directly linked, but it will occur if this contract is approved.
Yeah, we've had a great relationship historically with Waste Management in the community, then in a, in a wide variety of ways. Certainly, in our, in our work with, on the Universal Preschool Program that won the City Livability Award, which Waste Management is the sponsor of as well. And so, we, we, we've been in these discussions with Waste Management Corporate and with the Waste Management Foundation side about, about, you know, sort of taking, helping us to keep demonstrating this as a, as a, as a important option, option for other cities to consider, just as they've been doing through the livability war. So we really appreciate the support, Susan's support and the rest of the team there, but also our local, our, our, our current and historic local team that's been bringing this forward as well. So, Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. Before we move to actually having the motion before us, I, I want to thank the folks working, working on this because I think we did provide a lot of input and guidance, and I think that that was heard. And I, I feel like our, our citizens and the businesses will end up with a higher level of service with really good value. So I, in particular, when I was reading the collection service agreement, I was focusing on particular things like the new services and the extent of those new services, the, the, how the city benefits to as revenues are collected. I was looking closely at that, and then the extension clauses, and when the laws change, which they will during the course of this contract, how is that handled? And I was, I was really satisfied with the work that was done to bring this forward.
All right then. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I too. I mean, we've been with Waste Management since the inception of the city, and they're a class act. They're, they're, they've really assisted us with a lot of community-based organization kinds of assistance and, and different things. It's not just picking up the garbage, writing your check, and move along. They do a lot of things. So, I'm pretty happy with the way this thing has gone, and I'd like to make the motion that I find that this collection services agreement is exempt from California Quality Act, SEQA, and I would approve the authorization of the mayor to execute an attached collection services agreement with Waste, Waste Management Incorporated.
I will second the motion.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Agreement is approved. And Natish, I assume you also got sufficient direction on the rate setting? All right, thank you. Thanks to the Waste Management team, and thanks, Paulina. Next is item 22, which is a presentation on the status of the I Street Bridge replacement project, and I'm sure a supplemental financial policies update from Natish on this as well.
Bye, Tim.
All right, Mr. Martinez.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Rafael Martinez. I am your new transportation manager, city traffic engineer for the city of West Sacramento. Tonight, Mr. Jason McCoy and I are going to be giving you an update on the status of the project of the I Street Bridge replacement project. We also have here tonight Zach Sevilia, who is the project manager, as well as Rob Hines, who is a principal for Mark Thomas and consultants, who, they are the consultant on the project as well. But with that said, I will go ahead and get started. The city of Sacramento, in participation with the city of West Sacramento, started looking at possible crossings of the Sacramento River in 2010 as part of the Sacramento River Crossings Alternative Study. The study was approved in 2011, 2012, and it identified eight potential crossing locations shown here. At the completion of the study, it was determined that two, two new bridges are needed across the Sacramento River, and we have shown here the two locations that are moving forward. One, the north, north market area, in the north market area, near, near the existing I Street Bridge, and one south of the US 50 Pioneer Bridge at 15th Street on the West Sacramento side and connecting Bro, connecting to Broadway on the, on the West Sacramento side. Sorry. In 2012, the cities of Sacramento and West Sacramento took advantage of then the final remaining federal highway bridge replacement program funds, and we were granted $76.6 million for the project, for the project. Plus, we have approximately $11 million of local matching funds between both agencies of City of West Sacramento and City of Sacramento. So last year, we had informed you that we had completed the alternative study in 2012, and we were one year into the environmental studies that at the time hadn't started the value engineering analysis. Well, as of today, we are done with the VA study, and we are on the cusp of completing the environmental. The two agencies still need to review the final draft, and hopefully, we can have it open for public review of the document this fall. The close of the public review will conclude the environmental process, and we can jump into the design. Here is where, here is when staff intends to include council, and this is where we plan to work together on the look, the aesthetics, the shape, with dimensions of what the bridge will be looking like. If there are any considerations by council or by management that have functionality or aesthetics of the bridge that is different from the VA study, this is the time to bring that up. Here is where we will sit down, work together to discuss all the positives and negatives of each alternative, each option, and make a decision on what is in the best interest of the city. We will choose and move forward from there. Now, between now and then, we still have some significant hurdles that we will have to cross. In particular, one of them being the Caltrans eligibility determination memo. This is a Caltrans document which will outline which project elements will be eligible for funding. There are four elements that are still up for discussion. The first is the roadway width. Both agencies feel 52 feet, and I apologize, I believe it says 50 up there, 52 feet will be the best geometry to accommodate two lanes with, with bike lanes and allow for future flexibility of streetcar as it expands in the area and vehicular volume if it expands in the area as well. Another element is the levy improvements, which will be required by the Army Corps of Engineers if we want to get the 404, 408 permit. These improvements should be made prior to the construction of the bridge. Another is sidewalk widths, which both City of Sacramento and City of West Sacramento are advocating 15 feet, but which Caltrans is recommending 16 feet, because that is their industry standard. Lastly, is the needed, the need for the roadway width on C Street, which I will elaborate a little bit now. The Economic Development Department created the Washington Realized Sustainable Community Strategy, which envisions, which has, gave the envision of the feel and look of the Washington District. On C Street in particular, the vision is a multimodal one with bike lanes, buffer lanes, and a nice wide open sidewalk. In order to accommodate the needed level of service for the eastbound, eastbound direction, the capacity, we needed two lanes going eastbound with one lane going westbound, as well as the two bike lanes that are part of the sustainability strategy program, as well as buffer lanes. This would mean that the city would need to look into working with the developer or the landowner that is on the south side of, of C Street to acquire or to do some kind of mitigation to improve the frontage. Approximately 14 feet, and I apologize for the, for the exhibit is not very clear, but we would need approximately 14 feet in order to accommodate all those lanes if we were to abide by the current standards. This would be potentially option A. Option B would be an interim one, but could also be one that could be long-lasting, which we, what we would do is we would modify the striping to stay still within industry standards, but we would minimize the lanes to 11-foot lanes. We would reduce the buffer, the buffer lanes, reduce some of the bike lanes, and then ultimately work with the developer or the landowner on the south side of C Street in order to widen the sidewalk to its ultimate road, ultimate width, which we would preferably like to have somewhere in the vicinity of about 12 feet, but it's whatever we would have left. So we would be working with the developer on that side, but this would be a great alternative in which we wouldn't need to have any, either property acquisition or have to deal with the property owner at the time, and then proceed forward with the project without any Caltrans delays. That essentially concludes my presentation of, of the project. That's where we are today. If you have any further questions, Mr. McCoy and I are here most gladly to, to answer them.
Has this already been heard by the Sacramento City Council? Or they don't, or is, is the same issue don't apply to them?
Well, I'll, I'll leave it up to Jason, since Jason has more history on the project to answer that question.
I believe Sacramento City Council is going to be hearing an update. I think this is going to be amendment number eight for them, and they'll be hearing that, I think, on July 26th. I just heard that today, so we are working with Jesse Gothin, who is the project manager on the City of Sacramento side. He was here a little bit earlier tonight, and I believe he's watching right now because he's a West Sacramento resident, so. So if, we definitely are anticipating this, this is going to go before their council, because we are looking to advance the bridge type selection report, was actually in phase two of this project. We'd be moving it into the environmental phase, so it means that we'd be increasing our costs and our Caltrans requests from approximately 2.3 million to, I think, about 2.6 or 2.7 million. So that contract amendment has to go before City Council in Sacramento.
I, I do have, I have a lot of concerns about this street redesign. Essentially, what we've done is told bicyclists to ride at your own risk. I mean, we've, we've gotten rid of the buffers, we've shrunk the bike lanes, left the auto lanes essentially the same width, except cutting the auto parking lane, so that the parking lane and the bike lane are essentially together the size of one, one traffic lane. That, that, that's not consistent with what we're trying to create. And it's, so it's essentially said of, if you, if we have to squeeze this space in, we will, we will make sure nothing changes for auto traffic, but everything changes for the cyclist and for the pedestrian. And I just, that's, to me, that's the wrong opening play to be making in the very, in the, you know, the very first significant infrastructure decision that we're making post-Washington Realized Sustainable Communities Plan. Because this, this has a potential, I mean, given the rail yards and their, and the, you know, the stadium and all the, the intensity of development both sides of the river, this has the potential of being a fairly heavily used corridor, a very heavily used corridor. And so asking cyclists to, to be in an unbuffered four-foot lane that is right next to a, a pretty narrow six-and-a-half-foot parking lane for, for SUVs is not, it's not promoting a bicycle-friendly environment. It's not creating the kind of corridors that, there are no alternatives for, because you can't, you're not going to be able to go some other way, given that this is the connection to the, to the only bridge in the, in the north. So I, and I get it in terms of the Caltrans issues and, and the cost of the right-of-way acquisition, but it's not going to get cheaper to acquire the right-of-way once we've built this. And, and the developer, at that point, will have more leverage. We will have already sunk our costs in doing this piece of it. So I, I just have concerns about what we're, what we're, you know, the, the choices that we're making around how to fit into this envelope and whether we really have to do this or not, given the, given the, the cost to the, to the, to the feel of the neighborhood that we're creating.
What we're hoping for is, once we find out where Caltrans is with their determination, we'll then present that to you in terms of what we have for the interim and what options we have, what the cost associated with it is, what the schedule delay, if there are any, associated with it, and then move forward. What options we have before us, what alternatives we have before us. And I agree with you completely. It, it's not promoting what we want to do. It, it's getting the minimums, but, you know, the minimums shouldn't be what, what we strive for. We, we should strive for a lot more. So once we find out, and, and not to say that the Caltrans determination are the end-all, be-all, we will still be, if there are any contrary to what we wish and what we foresee the vision for that location, we will still push Caltrans to say that this is needed as part of the project. So we will be working together with Caltrans, with City of Sacramento, as well as with council, giving you regular updates as to where we're at and how we proceed forward.
Is this block of C Street covered by the, by the, is Caltrans the one, the decision-maker on the block of C Street, or are they, or are they the decision-maker on the bridge? And the, and the, and the geometry, the approach?
There, there's actually kind of a question right now between what is mitigation, what is project description? And with Caltrans, they have said in the past that they will not cover anything beyond the, the landing of the bridge itself, which means that they have declared that they will not be covering anything or considering anything else participating west of Third Street. That would mean that any of the project costs moving forward would be on the burden of the city itself. So while we are not in agreement with that, and we are, as staff, pushing forward for anything that is going to be a requirement of the project to be considered a mitigation for the project, while we are having these open discussions with Caltrans, and until we have a determination, a determination letter in our hands to kind of kick off the negotiations on that, we are looking for positions to potentially fall back on in the interim while we move the project forward and potentially have to have negotiations with property owners, et cetera. So we're looking at an interim condition and a long-term condition in such a way that it would not be a negative on the project schedule itself or hamstring the city into having to do something that we don't necessarily want to do or have to pay for.
But if, 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 if we, if we end up being the ones, if, if their current stance holds and they're not paying for west of Third, west of Third Street, then what's the advantage to us of doing this two-part, you know, this, this quote-unquote interim strategy and then later ripping it up, I mean, ripping up the sides and, well, actually, even then, I, I don't, I don't think you indicated we would ever change the, the street geometry, we would, we would just, we would just widen the sidewalk.
Well, until we understand exactly what the costs are, we didn't want to start agreeing to something that the council hadn't had a chance to take a look at or doesn't fully understand what the cost or time implications are going to be with any decisions. So staff didn't want to make any decisions on that, and in the short term, we're saying, hey, we have an operational solution that would allow us to progress with the project while at the same time start opening dialogue with both Caltrans and potentially neighboring property owners to try to figure out what is our long-term solution. If it's Washington Realized, which would include an additional travel lane, but also the bicycle buffers and the wider lanes, then at that time, we want to come back to council, say, here's the implications for, for this, here's what the costs from what we can see are going to be, and here's how we recommend moving forward, and at that time, we can start making some decisions.
Because if, if, if we're, if we're the sole funder at that stage, you know, assuming we don't, we don't prevail in the argument with Caltrans, if we're the sole funder, it, it seems to me like, I mean, just, that we could, we, that this won't be the critical path element for the project, that we, we could do this, this street work faster than the bridge was being built. I mean, given just, given the stuff that y'all have built in the last 18 months, that, you know, even if we didn't know until 2019 what the bridge was going to look, you know, what, what that, we, we could build whatever we wanted at that stage. I'm just, I'm not, I, I hear, just, if, if we're going to be the only ones spending the money on it, and it, and it's not going to affect, it doesn't affect the bridge opening itself, it seems like we should be building what we, what we want and what we committed to the community we were going to create.
That is correct.
Into what, into what Caltrans is, because Caltrans is just the FHWA, or the, they're just their administrator in California.
That's correct, yes.
And, and the USDOT was a partner in the Sustainable Communities Grant that, that created Washington Realized. So if, I mean, if we run into one of these obstacles, I know I keep saying this, but if we run into one of them and we need to make contact with, with, with Caltrans, with the state transportation agency, or the, you know, the White House, whatever, then let's do that in order to deliver the, the, the project that, that, that we need and that we, that we, that we're building, that we're, that we're going to, evolving a community out of, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the only, the only element that, that is critical for the bridge itself and the operations of the bridge is having two eastbound through travel lanes to the bridge itself, because that allows for enough stacking to prevent a gridlock situation during peak travel times. And it's only between, we actually would be reducing a lane between Fifth Street and Fourth Street down to just one eastbound travel lane, because we don't need that additional width. You, you might recall, there is an apartment complex there. We will be adding bicycle lanes there. We will not have to impact the existing developments that are there. But the through travel lane eastbound, the two, must be there between Third Street and Fourth Street in order to have optimal operations from a traffic perspective.
Okay, my other question was actually about the, the, the circulation redesign in the property at Second Street. I thought, I, I didn't see, maybe you provided a, you know, a diagram of what, what this circulation, what this redesign, what that meant, what, you know, what we would be using with this property is.
This, so.
I'm actually very interested in that, too. So I hadn't seen that before, and I, I am concerned about that area becoming an island. There, there's a little area that, I don't, I don't understand how it's being built. So my question was to learn more, so sorry to jump in, Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me jump back. Back in 2015, I believe it was June, we did talk about that briefly with the council, and we started looking at other options, because the bridge itself will be cutting off Second Street. We looked at alternatives to go underneath where the current bridge alignment would go. We looked at raising it up. We tried to find other ways of keeping Second Street as a through street. All of them were cost prohibitive, or they would have impacts on future levies being so close to the riverfront. So what we've had to do is we've worked with community development, economic development to start looking at what are potential solutions. We looked at potential cul-de-sacs. What we did was decided that having a, acquiring property to those properties that are currently fronting on Second Street, in order to create a, an elbow, so to speak, roadway to maintain access to those properties, is what is currently proposed in the environmental document. That environmental document, we have a preliminary administrative draft that is being reviewed by both cities. The administrative draft will be available in a few weeks, which will be circulated to the staff of both cities, as well as the agencies involved, and then we'll have a public review draft that'll be coming out sometime in September, I want to say, depending on how, how many changes we have to the administrative draft. That will all be displayed in there of how we came to the decision-making process on that, and how we didn't want to actually just create this no man's land in there and still maintain some access to existing residents. Caltrans has made the determination that because that is on the east side of Third Street, that they would be looking at acquisition of properties as participating costs. And in the VA study, one recommendation was to look at acquisition of all the properties that were impacted over in that area, and then putting those together in one contiguous parcel for future development potential. That is being analyzed in the environmental document for impacts associated with, you know, potential displacements and engineering constraints and environmental constraints.
But we're, so we're not signing off on any of that tonight?
We're not signing off on anything.
At one point, I thought you said, you know, this is, this is your chance to give, to respond to the VA analysis, but so.
Right, at this point, we are waiting for our letter from Caltrans to tell us exactly what it is that they are considered participating and not participating. That will allow us to take a look at that, digest it, come back to council, and give you some options.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Berlin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Here are a few dates that might be of interest to you that are coming up. This Friday, July 22nd, is the grand opening of The Barn at 10:00 a.m. And then next Wednesday, on July 27th, will be a party for Denise Seals to celebrate her retirement, and that is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the, then Thursday, July 28th, is the next dig-in dinner at the West Sacramento Farmers Market, and the celebrity chef that night will be our own Mayor Potem Beverly Sandin, and the chef will be Brett Stockdale from Pangaea, and the dinner will benefit the Center for Land-Based Learning. And then on Thursday, August 4th, will be the second graduating class of the Youth Fire Academy, and that'll be in the Galleria at 6:00 p.m. And then Friday, August 5th, will be a Summer Steps Program Completion Ceremony in the Galleria at 10:00 a.m., where our Summer Steps interns will be given certificates and given their badges that they've earned through the program. badges that they've earned through the program.
All right. And one of those badges will be only for those Summer Steps interns who made it all the way to adjournment tonight?
[laughing]
That's, that's what being a department director is all about. So, well, it's not all about that, but, so congratulations to the five, I think, the five remaining standing, or so.
We got a pool going.
All right, City Manager report.
I was skeptical of the digital badges, but now I'm not. They really work. Just briefly, Mayor Potem Sandin mentioned the Stone Lock Tour, where about 100 folks attended, and there was a joint meeting with the commissions. The findings of that tour, along with the overall Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan, will be a topic for an agenda item on August 17th. So we'll update the council on that. Phil Wright here? Yes, Phil Wright is here. He did jump on Mr. Kristoff's question on the status of the Group A funds. There is still 2.6 million available. I have a memo here that we have prepared for other council members. I'm not quite sure how that did not get to you, but I do have one here. Phil also spoke with the gentleman who spoke during public comment and identified the 2.6 there. In addition, just recently, we have spent 1.6 million on Bright Park on funds other than the Group A funds. So I have that memo available for you, and I apologize for what happened in terms of the transmission of that to you.
Questions on the City Manager report? City Attorney report? Staff direction for members of the council? Just, just one, so just a note, we've received the notice from the PUC, the state PUC, about the potential overlay on the area, on the 916 area code, and, and upcoming hearings on this issue. And there are too many phone numbers in the 916, so they're contemplating an overlay. An overlay can often be the exact same boundaries as the existing area code, which would be an inconvenience, but would not be, would not harm us disproportionately. But an overlay can also be only a portion of the existing area. And I think we certainly have an interest in maintaining the same, the same area code as our, the rest of our economic zone. So I just encourage, you know, staff to, to keep, keep tabs on this. And if this starts turning into something other than 916 plus a new area code that covers the entire 916, that we should, you know, let us know so we can be involved. And both we and Placer are on the two, we're the two non-Sacramento County portions of the 916, the significant ones. We, if there was a geographic split, we would be the ones that would be the most vulnerable. So it doesn't, I don't think that's what they're doing. I think they're doing a complete overlay, but we should be monitoring it, so. I agree. All right, and we have no future agenda requests, so is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Johansson moves, and Mr. Kristoff seconds. The meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.